Let's get this show on the road.
Is Eric on? He'll see us, okay. Are we picking up?
Who wants to take it?
Sure.
Ross, you're on this year.
Oh, I will be happy to. So this year, uh, we engaged with the Adams Group, um, as we have in the past, they've, um, started their work earlier this spring and continued through, um, up until July of auditing our 2024 financial statements. We also use as a reminder an outside consultants, um, because I am basically a department of one, um, so he helps me with the year end closing and balancing, and he also does, um, the drafts of the financial statements. Um, so that is, he is a great help, um, and he, uh, gets a lot of the documentation that the Adams Group needs. Um, so online tonight, we have Eric Miller. He's a partner with the Adams Group. Um, he's been working with us for, I think this might be our third year, um, maybe fourth, actually, I'm not sure.
I think it's fourth.
Um, and so tonight he's gonna, Eric, if you wanna share your screen as you go through, um, you should be able, we made you a panelist, so you should be able to do that. Um, he'll walk through the governance letter, which is basically their letter to the Board of Trustees, and then he'll briefly, um, walk through some of the financial statements, and then we'll open it up for any questions. Um, I think he usually keeps it pretty high level, so if you have any questions for me, um, we can, we can do that as well. And then the financial statements are on the consent agenda tonight, so if there are any questions, um, you know, just feel free to let us know. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Eric.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thanks for having me. And if I'm not looking at the camera on my laptop, it's because I'm looking at the other screen that I'll be sharing. Um, so to Cassie's point, I'll keep it high level, open it up probably for more back and forth or any questions that you all may have for me. Um, let's see if, I just sent out a request to share my screen, so let's see if it. There we go. Everybody see it okay?
Yep, you might wanna make it a little, if you can enlarge it. We can see
How's that?
Half of your screen too, it's half of your beautiful family.
Oh.
Important.
Yeah, here, I'll just open everything up. It's a wider screen, so sometimes it's, um, there we go. How's, how's this? If we pop it up, make it big.
Yeah, that, that was
Awesome.
I think you, you all have it in front of you, is that right? So, okay.
Well, so what I'm gonna start with is just our kinda required communication out to governance. Uh, at the beginning of the process, we kinda send out a preliminary, uh, letter that kinda highlights the audit process and our responsibilities versus the town's or management's responsibilities. This is kind of the all encompassing letter that, uh, just kinda crosses the Ts and dots the Is and, um, those items that they tell us are required to be communicated out at the end of the process. Um, so just kinda scrolling our way down the page, one new standard came about this year related to compensated absences. As you'll see within the letter, there was nothing material that impacted the town. Um, as I've been saying, somebody over at, at Gatsby's just kinda bored and they're pumping out these standards that I just don't think has a lot of impact on a lot of governmental entities, and in this case, it, it didn't impact the town at all. Um, accounting is not an exact science, you know, we like to think everything is to the penny. Um, there are a lot of numbers or certain numbers within your financial statements that we do consider to be estimates. Uh, for example, FEMA, I mean, you guys have been dealing with FEMA going on, what, fifteen, sixteen years now, and so there's still a lot of balances within your financial statements related to FEMA that are just still outstanding. Um, so we consider that to be an estimate for part of your financial statements, just because I think as of today, it's still kinda unknown what ultimately the town will or will not receive. Um, another example is capital assets, you know, as you saw with the FEMA flood, something could happen and all of a sudden your capital asset number can change from year to year pretty drastically, just with impairments of assets, uh, et cetera. So in our world, those are all considered estimates. Uh, we do do work over them and, and arrive at a spot where they're all, um, materially reasonable or properly stated as of the end of the fiscal year. Um, difficulties, no difficulties, no disagreements with management or with Carl, the third party individual, um, throughout the process. Um, and there was nothing, nothing to report out in terms of audit findings or, or anything of that nature this year. So I think this is, you know, I think last year we might've had one item that was remedied. So, uh, again, I think that's just a testament to the work that you guys are doing as a, as a board and, um, as Cassidy and them as the, kinda the finance group. Um, nothing really to report out from a control finding. Um, so I'll pause there and see if there's any questions kinda surrounding that high level requirements or communication.
Any more questions this time?
You mentioned FEMA, it's maybe more for staff than yarders, but have we seen any material changes in the last, is it now, seven months from how FEMA's handling our, you know, pending request for reimbursement to what we saw in prior years?
Uh, we did this year receive, um, a couple hundred thousand in twenty twenty-five in reimbursement, so we are seeing some closeouts, um, so that we were able to, cause what happens is they pay us, we turn around and we pay them. In twenty twenty-four, we had no payments, uh, which essentially meant they were not paying us, they were not closing out, um, anything from us, but we are seeing that now in twenty twenty-five. Um, so that's definitely good. We've made two payments so far this year, um, in twenty twenty-five, but twenty twenty-four saw really little to no activity.
What do you anticipate happening completely?
I would love to say next year, um, but, uh, it depends on how fast they're gonna close out and review those projects. I, for as far as payment goes, as far as potential clawbacks, um, you know, that's
It's, so the clawbacks are allowed currently, um, for up to three years after the incident has been closed. So that means when the state closes the event, then the three-year clock starts.
And the state will close that, you're saying?
No, there's no
We still have twenty projects left to be reimbursed.
And it's not just the pound of lions either, it's the whole event, so, um, that's, you know, kind of the tricky part as well.
And there's, there's no shift in what we're expecting in terms of drawbacks from, uh, one percent we, we've been after the end?
No, not that we, not that we're aware. And, um, our goal was to set aside a million dollars, and we have almost met that. And so if at the end of the closeout, um, they don't find a million dollars worth of drawbacks, then great, we've got that money to use towards potential projects or reserves or what have you, but no indication of anything changed from prior years.
Assuming the future is relatively the same as the past, how much would you anticipate being in that fund that we have, that we tested, but after the three years after the event? Which I'm, I'm assuming is like five years from now or?
Five to ten, probably.
Yeah, I, I
Enough that a number of us are likely dead.
Let's hope not. Um, it's hard to say. Um, Tracy would probably have the best indication of what she is aware of, so I could ask her and, and get that number available when we do budget time, because we usually during budget, we always allocate, you know, a set amount to set aside for the year, so I'll get that during our budget.
It's not gonna affect this, really?
No.
Or the nice sense that, well, but just, just for curiosity, what kind of the funds is that?
Fund balance. It just sits in fund balance. Um, it's in fund balance within three hundred thousand within parks, and then the remainder is in the general fund. So it just sits in fund balance, but as far as where our money sits, in call trust, which gains interest. So at least we're getting, we do get interest. Um, uh, actually, the past year or so, it's been closer to five, um, and it's been four or five just because of how the, um, economy has been going and the feds aren't, aren't moving too much.
So is it, sorry, we'll have the budget to have that, so to make it valid, so?
Um, if we want to get to the million dollars, we will. So basically, the interest that's earned on our call trust isn't necessarily designated just to a specific source, right? It does go to the funds, it gets allocated out to the funds, the various funds based on the cash balances within the funds, but the specific reserve for the flood isn't generating X amount of interest, and then that goes to the flood. It, it's not necessarily like that. It just goes back in, the interest earned goes back into the fund to be utilized for whatever budget purposes we, we do with them a year.
And you've seen nothing happening with FEMA for the last, like, work to Mars West for the last six months that would have been unexpected?
No.
We might not saw a little flurry, if you remember that?
In the beginning?
In the beginning, we saw a little flurry of, um, projects moving through that felt like they had been kinda held up, but it's all evened out again. Tracy continues to me, but the state every other week, and goes through this list of outstanding and trying to keep it moving along. Um, and they, the state still has their contractor, Carlisle Thompson, who does, um, who's doing our most complex, like our, uh, if you guys remember, it was called the, uh, what was the name of that fund that, that had all of the six different projects in it? It was a pilot project that involved all the parts. That one's really complex. They still are paying those folks to look for things, so.
You know, if we have nine hundred thousand, basically set aside as a callback reserve, and it's earning somewhere thirty percent interest, that's when we hit the thousand dollars of interest. That's just, you know, said, could we not budget, who thinks new fallback fund and just direct whatever interest is earning, you to pile up in that fund, you know, go into that fund until it reached a million dollars?
And it is really six of one, half dozen of the other, because, because it, the interest earnings goes into the various funds, and we're budgeting to set aside X amount of dollars. So we could say, okay, we estimate we're gonna get thirty thousand dollars in interest earnings. That's what we're gonna put aside. So it, it really doesn't affect what we do overall as, as a budget, um, because we get our interest earnings in, and then essentially we budget a, a certain dollar amount to set aside in fund balance.
Million still seems right?
That's what Tracy says, and she's hoping that it's not even, not even the gap.
And so
It's always been the guess, though.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about other things we could have. It would be very pressing in the next year, but it'd be better to potentially stop at nine hundred and allow some of that stuff to go toward stormwater or if it's a really dear shopping food, but every time I hear it was a disaster, I pick up another set of glasses, try to clean them from coming in a few hours. I mean, if the, you know, that's indication of future behavior, it's past behavior. We're like a method, you know, in terms of so far, and we haven't changed that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the callbacks, they're just, just kids.
True.
And so we felt like we followed everything that the letter involved with FEMA. You know, now you get into a probability discussion, and that, that's where I think we could get into the probability discussion and say, really low probability, we're gonna have a callback, and if it happens to two hundred K, but anyway, I think it's worth having that during budget discussion to say, are the funds to be out of the kitchen?
And we can bring Tracy in, I think Tracy would be great for that.
We should still talk about too, um, what we owe the state, you know, in payback, which comes from our reimbursements from FEMA mostly, and so far, they have been really close. We have not had any serious discrepancies between what the state thinks they owe us and what we've shown. So, that's
Yeah, it would seem like that's definitely worth looking at, and us thinking about when we get to the, to the budget, is there, and anyway, we can do that, in any area in which we can do it, but plus us, give us somebody who said sooner rather than later, is anything? Anything else before we move on?
Well, I think, I think I could maybe give you a little pictorial of maybe what Cassie was referencing earlier, so I've just pulled up, before we go any further and we're on this, on the topic, I've just pulled up kinda your, um, governmental funds balance sheet, and I think what Cassie was talking about was this number down here that's basically town share of flood costs. So because you guys pool cash, where you have kinda one big cash account or investment account, and you kinda allocate it out against these different funds up here, management has already set aside this five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just kind of off to the side for anything that might pop up related to those flood costs if you were to run into that situation. Um, so Cassie, let me know if I'm off base, but I think this little figure right here is kind of just representing management's assignment of potential or maybe outflows in the next, you know, twelve, eighteen months, if there are some. Um, so you guys have already set aside kind of a, a good chunk of change for any of these items.
Three hundred thousand in the parks fund as well, and that's that one item that Carl, that you suggested that the, um, itemized out, but Carl was saying that it's already restricted, so.
Yeah.
So there really is eight hundred and fifty thousand at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, and this number up here too, that's sitting in the grants fund, unavailable for about four hundred thousand, I think a lot of that's still FEMA, so just because of the, um, government period of availability, accounting speak, uh, I think a lot of that money, it's just sitting kind of in an unearned account, and once you do start receiving these reimbursement requests, you're gonna see a lot of this four million dollars move from your balance sheet to your revenue accounts.
That all sounds great with the name. Okay, you can continue.
Uh, well, since we're here, um, on the financial audit component, um, for twenty twenty-four, unmodified, clean opinion, um, again, there was nothing that ca- came up from a standpoint of what we're required to report out, or, um, even any little internal control items that, that, uh, didn't come up during the course of the twenty twenty-four audit. Um, I do always think it's important to kinda outline, um, you know, in this instance, we don't draft the statements for the town, uh, but Carl, the third party individual does, but at the end of the day, it, it is management responsibility, it is board responsibility for the, um, the fair presentation of those statements. Um, us at, us as auditors basically take the unadjusted trial balance, the, the numbers that you guys provide, and our responsibility really is just to obtain reasonable assurance about whether or not those, those numbers that you're giving us are materially correct. Um, so I think that's kind of the differentiator between kinda what, what the town or what management responsibilities are versus what our responsibilities are. Um, I wasn't gonna jump too much into the financial statements or year over year too much. Um, like I said, I think a lot of what you're gonna see down here in this restricted category for grant expenditures and parks and open space is just an increase in revenues during the course of the year, and because those particular funds have to be shown as, um, restricted fund balance, a lot of those increases that you're seeing from last year to this year are just a product of, um, either A, an increase in revenue, or just B, just an overall increase in fund balance. And that's really what's kinda driving these, um, changes or increases from year to year related to these restricted categories. Um, just looking at maybe the income statement as a whole, uh, your biggest piece was probably, um, you know, three hundred thousand dollar increase in other taxes, um, you know, sales tax, et cetera. Um, trying to see what else we got. Public works and streets, Cassie, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think a lot of that was just a product of, uh, repairs and maintenance that you guys might've had in prior years, and you just didn't have as much of it in twenty twenty-four as you had it compared to twenty twenty-three.
That's correct.
Um, but other than that, your kinda your, your government funds, your governmental activities had about a million dollar increase in net position from last year to this year. The business type funds or your water and sewer had a, about a three hundred thousand dollar decrease, and a lot of that, I think, was just a product of, um, transfers that were made from one fund or your enterprise funds to your governmental funds. So it really wasn't a big change in, you know, your charges for services or your overall expenses, it really was just transfers or taking the money from the water fund and transferring it to the general fund.
I think a lot of that was also the, last year, obviously, we had the, the settlement money within the sewer portion, so I think that that counts for quite a big change in the enterprise funds.
Yep, no, that's, yep, right here, right underneath that table, exactly what Cassie just said. Yep.
I always like to point out, um, for budget purposes, and I think that this is more, um, on the level of, of where we dive into the financials together is, is the fund balance, um, amounts. And so if you look at, um, page C three, um, we use unassigned fund balance for the general fund. Um, so if you look at the fund balance section, you can kind of see, um, where we're sitting for fund balance, um, to begin twenty twenty-five at, and, and we can dive into this a little bit more, um, together, but, um, it, it does break it down, at least from the governmental funds this way, and then I usually look at for the enterprise funds, um, kind of the magic page, I guess, that I use is, um, C six for the enterprise fund. So if you're curious to know, um, you know, when we talk about budgeting and, and where we're gonna begin the year at, um, essentially, those are the numbers that, that I pull from fund balance. Um, sometimes like with the general fund, we'll have to pull a couple of different of those line items. Um, so for example, the, um, subsequent year expenditures, um, on C three and the general fund, those are assigned to twenty twenty-five budgeted expenditures, meaning, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, meaning that, um, we are budgeting to use fund balance to fund some of our twenty twenty-five expenditures. A lot of times they're, actually, for us, all the time, they're, they're tied to capital projects, but for purposes of saying, we're gonna start twenty twenty-five with the unassigned fund balance, well, we're also gonna add that two hundred and eight thousand to it because we budgeted those, um, funds for, for that. Um, but tho- those are kinda the two pages that, that I utilize for where are we gonna start the budget year, and, um, you know, those are the, kind of the magical fund balance numbers that we're always referring to. They do not, um, take into account our three-month reserve though. So that's another calculation that I always do as a part of the budget. When I say this is available for spending, I always reduce that amount by the three-month operating reserve.
When we see unrestricted fund balance, you'll bet it, but does not, that does include the three months, the funds for three months reserve.
Yes.
On V six, the, uh, table of outstanding debt, could you, have you paid me in this due, the big ticket item in turn?
Absolutely.
Worried about, yeah, changes in compensated absences.
Now, so the advance from state is a big ticket item. That is the flood money. So that is the money that they are repaying us, and we are essentially turning around and, and paying them. So for the most part, it, it is a we will still have potentially some, um, unreimbursable costs that, that we will have to cover, but, um.
And since we get the money in FEMA that balance, it changes our
That's right.
Okay.
And, but it will change for twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
And then, the revenue loans?
The revenue bonds, those are, yes, those, the revenue loans are the wastewater treatment plant loan, um, and then, uh, the electric. Um, we have an electric two, but I think one gets paid off in twenty twenty-six.
And this new, this new lease liability is John Deere Tractors, that the town started leasing this year with a five-year lease term.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And that's in the noise factor for some, so I mean, it's important, don't get me wrong, and, and where I'm going with this is if we have some big ticket item, our, our bonding capacity, uh, so, so the top line advance from state really would not impact that.
I don't think
It's just things, the revenue loans against the revenue occurring activities of
Of those enterprise funds, that's correct.
Sure, pretty clean debt.
Yeah.
Bound with
Absolutely, especially governmental, I mean, we essentially don't have it.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or Eric, was there anything else you wanted to touch on?
Um, no, there really wasn't. Um, I think to your point, you know, in terms of, you know, that advance to advance from the state, again, it's just a product of, at some point, they're probably gonna start asking you guys to make payments on it. I don't know exactly what the interest rate is, or even if there is an interest rate on it. Um, but to Cassie's point, right now, you've got about two million dollars of unassigned fund balance, um, sitting within your general fund, so, you know, if tomorrow the state sent you a letter that said, hey, we want you to start making payments on this, you guys would be able to make payments. They wouldn't ask you for a five million dollar check tomorrow, but they might, you know, start asking for it in increments. Um, but you, as of now, you'd have the ability to withstand that with, without a problem. Um, no, that was really all I had. The only other piece is just kind of, you know, jumping to the back of the financial statements all the way back onto D seventeen, only because I think it's important to point out too that, um, you know, you guys are constantly entering into, you know, new IGAs or new construction agreements for these projects that you have ongoing. So as of the end of the year, you've got about one point seven million dollars worth of just construction commitments that you do have out there for costs that are gonna be incurred subsequent to twelve thirty-one twenty-four. So it, you know, of this one point seven, you might only spend a quarter million of it in twenty twenty-five, but that's basically what you've got as of uh, twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four in terms of just future costs that you've already entered into.
Those are more for our grant projects, St. Rain Trail, um, probably the Broadway, um,
Mm-hmm.
left in there as well.
Stuff that you'll, you'll, you'll ultimately be getting reimbursed for would be, um, my best guess.
Yeah.
No, I think that's it. Um, Well, yeah, I was gonna jump over to the single audit. Because the town spends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're required to have a, what's called a single audit or a kind of a compliance audit over the federal programs. That's gonna jump up to a million dollars next fiscal year. So Cassie, try and keep it under that so we don't have to do it. No, I'm just kidding. But no, so we've done, you've had a single audit ongoing since FEMA. If you've, if you're spending federal money, you will have a single audit. So for purposes of this year, excuse my scrolling, the program that we did the single audit over was this highway planning and construction program. So it's that US thirty six and St. Brain Trail are the big projects that are under that grant. And so what we're doing is, you know, we test for allowable costs. So we'll ask for a listing of expenditures, make a sample selection, and then we'll test it against the federal complyer, compliance requirements for that specific federal, federal program. Cash management, we'll test the reimbursements that you guys are submitting to the state or to the federal government saying, yep, Cassie's signing off, Victoria's signing off, it matches the expenditures. Everything's good to go. Procurement, you guys have a procurement policy in place. And so when you enter into new construction contracts under these programs, you, there are certain procurement requirements you're required to follow. So we, I think we looked at, I think there was only one big one this year that you guys entered into for those. So we looked at the new one that you guys entered into. Long story short, in all cases, I think there's six compliance requirements that we had to test. And in all cases, there was nothing of note. And so that's why kind of scrolling all the way down again on this schedule of findings and question costs, you'll just see that unmodified opinion for purposes of the single audit as well and X check, X marks in the no column. The reason that you just see why the town did not qualify as a low risk auditee, that's just because of prior years items that popped up. And so now if if you, if you don't have any findings for two years, you'll jump back up to a, a low risk auditee, which basically just means that the testing thresholds are less than what they currently would be.
Any other questions for Eric?
No, I, I just wanna say this, congratulations to the town staff. I'm just starting off, seeing, you might get these things in, in the past. I've always always kind of like go through the footnotes first to see what's in there. It's usually two or three things hidden that you send a video, but you should have done it this way. There aren't any issues. So I think that's a great help.
Yep, none. Yep. No, and there were no, there were no adjusting journal entries. So basically what, what Cassie and Carl gave to us the first day of the audit is what you're seeing within your financial statements. So everything that, that we looked at or tested or so on and so forth, what, what you've seen is exactly what's in your financial reports or financial statements. So.
Anything else you wanna tell us, Cassie?
No, I don't think so. I think I was happy with no findings. We're gonna go for year two and low risk.
Yeah. And appreciate all your guys' patience. I know Cassie and them were ready to go in, in May and it took me a little while to, to get through everything. So appreciate the patience this year.
Yeah, no problem. I, jury duty.
My first time and hopefully last time.
So I reckon you working remotely hasn't been a problem.
I hope not. I don't feel it has.
It feels less interruptive.
It works.
It works for a staff of one, yes.
Yeah, obviously. Thank you so much. We're, I'm really aware of what we have with you.
Thank you.
We are very grateful.
I am very grateful to continue the opportunity. I really am.
Anything else? All right, we will, this will be consent, which is wonderful. That is in consent.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, appreciate it. Let me know if anything pops up afterward. Send me an email or give me a call.
I'll probably work with you on the, the odd single audit submission, the federal clearinghouse again.
Yeah, yeah, let me know. You've got till end of August. So let me know, cause I know I've gotta go in and verify or sign off on it as well. So.
Absolutely. All right. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, take care. All right, take care.
Glad to, you may say here, questions for the board or stand and podium, wherever you're more comfortable.
Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it.
Thank you all actually for having me. I appreciate everyone's time.
So included in your packet of materials tonight is just an overview of Mr. Hallstein's request. So he is requesting a refund of her fees and taxes for a total of eight thousand six hundred ninety one dollars and forty nine cents. And I'll let him explain the rationale, but just generally that the code changed related to fire sprinklers for ADUs. So there's some documentation in the packet. Just staff's not making a position on this. This is really at the request of the board to bring this back for further discussion. Our only perspective is that it's not a typical item to refund when a code changes from time to time, which local governments do from time to time. So with that, we'll just take any questions you have. I know Mr. Hallstein is happy to answer any questions you have and then we'll circle back later for your direction.
Yeah, if you'd like to talk to us a little bit about your request, refresh it.
Certainly. Well, trustees, thank you for making the time to have me. And I know you didn't even need to do that and I appreciate it. Uh, my name's Harold Hallstein. I'm over at four thirty one Evans Street. I'm a lucky newer resident of Lions with my partner Catherine and my daughter Silvy. And the property that we bought was set up very well to create a garage ADU. Uh, I have always been a big believer of the town's policies related to ADUs and how it links, especially with our artist culture and affordable house. Uh, when I originally undertook the project, there was a document called ADUs in you and my relationship with everybody involved started very, very well because I wanted to collaborate and say, I'd love to help you refine the document, share what I'm learning, because I know people hadn't gone ground up with a garage ADU in a bit. Um, so in any case, it's sort of come a long way. The first real challenge that we had was that I was given misinformation by Alexander Painter about the nature of the approval for ADUs, because at the time I came, there was a rule change in process, which was gonna expedite approvals of ADUs. I was told that I would be eligible for that, but then somehow along the way, there was a miscommunication about thirty days being required for a law to actually going to effect after it's passed. In any case, it would have pushed the groundbreaking back well past spring and into the summer. I, I am greatly, deeply thankful to the staff for helping me get that back on track. That took a, a sort of a quick meeting to figure out how to adjust on that. And I went through the old process, not the new process with the full public review. Any case, along the way, the fire sprinkler code was changed, applicable to ADUs the year before I began the project. And one of the challenges that I think happened here in retrospect was people didn't understand that these sprinkler systems require a one inch inflow in order to be built without a three hundred gallon tank and additional pump system in order to serve, service. Now, if you're building a new single family home, you can get a one inch tap put in. Of course, my, my house has a three quarter inch tap in it. In the midst of it, what we were required to put in was a, a very expensive three hundred gallon tank with a pump system that would serve a three quarter inch tap to basically serve a single occupancy apartment above a garage, despite us having, you know, a three bedroom home where my full family lives, it's unsprinkled, etc. That was challenging. We, the, the, the board actually heard at that time a discussion about what the facts were economically about that decision, how much it would cost people. The fire department was very interested in it. A, a change was decided against. I went and installed that system. I think maybe perhaps because no new applications were put in for additional ADUs, people realized the economics of it were crippling. And, you know, the rules would change. And I, and I'd like to say, I'm deeply grateful for you all doing that for our music community and our community. It's gonna make a big difference for people who actually build these. Especially if you're like us within eyesight of a fire sprinkler or a fire hydrant, I should say. In any case, the last difficult part for me that was emotional and stressful is that we were stood up with prepaid professionals from Loveland on the final inspection by the fire department. It felt clear to me, the fire department wasn't ready for the role of inspecting more sprinkler projects like this. They spent two or three hours waiting around in my house, drove back to Loveland. We had to reschedule it. The whole thing ended up being quite a fiasco. Where it leaves me is really grateful that I think we're on the right track for what we wanna do with housing and affordability. But the total amount I paid in for permits and fees was quite a bit less than the system itself costed. My ask to you is to say from sort of a more private markets perspective, if someone gets a, a, a difficult service, which is what I have, uh, being misled about the permitting, being sort of spot regulated, to, to my understanding, no, no one else has had to put a sprinkler system in a garage ADU in the town of Lions. And it sounds like for the time being, I'll be the only person who's been required to do that. I'm, I'm here to ask if there's a possibility that you can see fit to make some refund of of what I, what I paid into the town related to the, the service that I received as a community member, trying, trying to actually help with the town's housing prop, pop, policies and give what I think is intelligent, well-considered feedback along the way. So that's the essence of our question.
In our workshops, we do not make any decisions. So it's important for you to to know that we will consider this later on as an item in the, in the board meeting. At this point, just conversation, discussion, I was one of the ones who wanted to take a look at this again and see what, if there was anything we could do that would not set a precedent that would be difficult for us as regards other properties, other situations. And looking at it, my concern has been since that time, and I'm speaking individually now. My concern is that it is setting a precedent in terms of making exceptions when a code changes. And I can see where we could have this happen many, many other times, including immediately with some people. And that is a concern of mine personally, as we, as we go forward with this. If we are to, to completely meet your requests and return those funds, I, my concern is precedent related to that. But I wanna hear from what other trustees think as well, after looking at all this. And any additional questions we want to ask. Another thing to note is, we as a town actually have, uh, anything that happens with the fire district has nothing to do with us in that regard. We, I'm sorry about that. But that is not something of which we have any kind of control whatsoever. They're utterly separate entities. And so you know, as it relates to any misinformation you were given by our planner, of course, that is something that we would have to accept responsibility for, at least be made aware of. But in terms of the district, I'm really sorry that that happened. That had to be a real pain in the neck. But that's between you and them, unfortunately, and there's not much people do about it.
May I make a small comment on that point? I, I do think for a town, especially of this size, making sure that the infrastructure and staffing is in place for the town to supply what it needs to, to support a law or a rule is really important. If it can't make good on its end of the commitment, while people are, while community members are making good on their ends of the commitment, it creates a very tense environment.
And outside of that one encounter, what, what in fact has the town, in your opinion, not been able to in a timely way respond to this?
The, there's, and it relates to your prior comment, there's really two things. Being misled about the permitting in the beginning was painful to our schedule and, and, and difficult. Number two is, is that I don't think that this is precedent setting in the sense that this item was heard with me testifying multiple times during the time when the rule was coming into place, when it went out of place during, during the process. And it did leave me as the single spot regulated person, which isn't a rule changed and now, oh, people aren't happy that they have to do sprinklers in the future and residents of the ancient past didn't. I was the only person who did a permit during the brief moment that that rule was in place.
Yeah, actually, there are other situations besides yours not related to sprinklers, okay, related to water and related to fees related to water that would in fact be similar. And so that, I'm, I'm aware of. Not sure how many other things staff did they know besides that specific issue. And in our case, what I'm referring to there is whether a CBD or Macintosh are used only for affordable housing or not. I think of the two properties that are next to your neighborhood where that, there was a specific request for for Macintosh, and we said no to that, we said thank you. And that is very similar. I mean, correct me, Steph, if I'm, if I'm, and you weren't here, we said something. That, that would be a, a similar situation with Victoria, correct?
Yes, I, I can see that as very similar.
Can I ask a question? I've got a schedule fees here, the total up to seventy five, seventy point five two, but your total of
Yes. There is a second receipt in the packet. The first, the seventy seven, seventy five is the remainder balance. So there's a second one in there for eleven hundred and twenty. So they come out as two receipts. They pay the plan review fee to initiate the process to review the building permit and then prior to issuance, they come in and pay the rest.
Okay. None of these include the fire district?
No, the fire district assesses their own plan review and permit inspection fees, and they are paid directly to the fire district.
Are there any similar requests from the fire district?
That's a great question. It's my understanding that my contractor paid those fees directly to the fire department and I had not thought about them in this case. And honestly, you itemizing them, I recognize there's some fees in here that aren't related to this issue. And I, I would understand that. I see that with my own eyes. Really what I'm concerned about is the service I received related to the permit itself, trying to get on the tax rolls to help have another unit of housing here.
Question, were any of the fees that Mr. Hallstein paid, do they include any like staff time for the additional use process?
So any conditional use permit application has a separate fee. That's not provided here. So I'd have to look back at the location records. So no, the answer is no.
Going down this list, it didn't seem like that was.
No, this is strictly the
complaint about town staff is kind of being, I think, not properly informed about the conditional use of the review process that used to be in others without.
That's typically a five hundred or a thousand dollar fee.
If any of the, if any fee belonging to that or his staff time charges or anything is that's, that's the one thing that's the
Yeah, I could bring that back and have that information to you prior to the board direction, or I can look it up here. If I can quickly.
Yeah, how quickly could you get that?
Well, I can certainly have it by the direction tonight. I've not, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, well.
You could have it by.
If there was a fee paid, I'm assuming you paid a
The number I gave was from my spreadsheet. I trust your records frankly more than my own spreadsheet tracking of this, but.
There is a fee required. We'll look at the permit file or the case file and see if it was paid.
Couple of questions. One, just on the code. So I found it interesting with a three quarter inch cap, you gotta have a three hundred gallon reservoir. So I assume that's in the ABC or in the, in the building codes?
It's in order to meet the sprinkler systems required pressure and water flow, it can only be achieved with a, a pump and a tank, which is now in my garage and takes
I found that interesting. Yeah. So you, you can't put it outside. So then all of a sudden it consumes space, so something you just built that you probably hadn't find.
And, and additionally, according to the installer, to be And additionally, according to the installer, to be inspected annually, another four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars per year.
The other question, if we do rent it, refill it here. I don't know if you base your rates, maybe your rent based on total cap costs versus would you be, you know, look at reducing the rent if you got the refund?
That's a, that's a great question and I'm glad you asked it. And I will tell you right now, any amount that is refunded, I will remove from the basis of the building, run the model again, and at the next lease, we'll move it down because the whole point of this project was to deliver it at a way that broke me even with the cost of capital that I have. And I'm, I'll look at you all right now and say, my next time that I lease it, I'll write the basis of the project down by any amount of refund, recalculate that amount and reset the rent to align with that.
Speaking of your costs, so what, how does the sprinkler system pay into your home insurance fees? Does the inclusion of the sprinkler on there cause you have the homeowner's rate?
No, it does not. And not one iota, they said we note that, but you have to understand, we take on flood liability when a system like that is in the building. So no, it made no difference to my insurance cost.
Even though it's in the.
And every year it has to be four-hundred-and-ninety-five per year, that's.
That's, that's what my installer charges for an annual inspection of the system. And I, as the homeowner, have to have a operable system to show the fire department.
Let me ask a question. When I look at these fees, would of all these fees applied for an ADU?
Yeah, so that's a good question.
Take out the sprinkler, you would have had to pay these anyway. My question goes kind of back to the fire department and the sprinkler system. And is that really where the reimbursement should be? Because whether or not you have a sprinkler, these fees are in place for an ADU.
Permit fees are based on valuation. And so if the sprinkler hadn't been included, maybe the valuation would have been, say, maybe eleven. I think your valuation for the sub cost was like eleven thousand, maybe plus some labor.
I'm going to be direct. My understanding is the permit fee is based on the electrical valuation, does not.
It should include the entirety of the construction project. So the valuation listed on your permit was like two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. So say you hadn't put in the sprinkler, it would have been maybe eleven plus labor. So we'd be looking at potentially like, you know.
Would you be able to figure that out?
So we could give you the, it would be a few, the total of the eighty-six would be a few hundred dollars less had the, on the permit, the entirety of the permit fees. If the valuation had come in, say fifteen less, right? So it maybe would have been eighty-two hundred and we can look at that. In terms of the conditional use, we're still finding out some things just to confirm. But there was a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee and a five-hundred-dollar escrow that we received. So seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, but right now we're trying to see if we spent all five hundred of that escrow.
That's always returned to me.
You did get all of that? Okay, so two, so two-hundred-and-fifty for the conditional use.
I have one that I just commented and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa. Of these fees that are listed here asking for reimbursement, would it be accurate to say that probably seventy to maybe eighty percent of these fees went to Charles Abbott and Associates to pay them for their service? So had to pay these to contract.
Of the building permit fee and the plan review fee, so the building permit fee is seventeen and change, seventeen hundred and change. The plan review fee was eleven-hundred-and-twenty. Those, I don't know what our contract in place with Charles Abbott, those would have been probably mostly gone to Charles Abbott. I believe we had like a seventy percent going to them. Most, the other good portion of this is taxes. So twelve hundred was an open space recycle tax, a thousand park fund use tax, general fund use tax, park fund, fair contribution fee to the schools. And then there's a hundred dollar floodplain permit. So I'd have to do the math, but maybe a third of the total was related to the building permit. There's a good chunk of this that's taxes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Austin, but my assumption is all of this you're aware of. But because we changed the code related to ADUs, you would like to see the town reimburse those costs, even though they included real costs to us. Because this board did though, to make that change.
I would, I would say yes, in essence. What I feel is, is that my project became a research and development project for the town's code. And it's going to be costing me forevermore. And I'm glad you got to where you should be in the code. But I'm the unlucky R and D spender.
And just throw out one other tool that the board has, and I don't know that there's a relationship here. Want you to think on it, but the town in the twenty-five budget does have the five-hundred-dollar property tax rebate. So there might be some way to come up with some sort of relationship to do that. If you're looking for a way to offset in a way that's already budgeted.
I was gonna mention, are you worried if you have property tax in place? But I believe those are conditioned on leasing the eighty percent of us paying my tenants. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
I have heard about that. I currently am leasing to a woman who is creating a children's musical. She's a musician. She certainly is below the AMI threshold. I have a lease in place. I can't change this time, but I'd be happy to learn more about it.
Yeah, if you talk to town staff about that, it wasn't just for new ADUs. It was in line to existing ADUs to try to encourage people to rent things to AMI less. I encourage you to talk to the staff.
I'm happy to look at it respectfully. The best way for me to have made this more affordable is not to have this extremely fancy system that's big enough for a single-family home in there. I, I, you know, and I can, the beauty of the AD policy is it allows us to create affordable housing without government subsidy. I don't think of this as a subsidy. I thought asking for the town to pay for this system was not going to fly. So I thought, hey, the permits and the fees. This is why I thought the idea.
One last thing, and then we're gonna need to break for a few minutes. Please understand, we are responsible for making financial decisions that are in the best interest of our fiduciary responsibility related to this town. So while we might have, any one or all of us may have a lot of sympathy for your circumstances of what we might do in a personal situation, what we can do as a town are going to be, are going to be considered different. So, so you're aware of that? We'll come back to this later on this evening. Thanks so much for your presentation. We're gonna take a four-minute break before we start. Thank you. It is seven hundred and two, and I'd like to draw to order the July twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the Lions Board of Trustees.
Yes, Mayor Rogan. Mayor Koteem Williams.
Present.
Trustee Hamrick.
Present.
Trustee Dottie. Trustee Lowell.
Present.
Trustee Browning.
Present.
And trustee Delman.
Present.
It's rise for these. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? Anything anybody wants to pull from the agenda or change? I would like to pull from the agenda the consideration of the moratorium for the historic district. As we said in our last meeting, we feel like it's really important for us to to consider that as a full board and we are two people short from having a full board right now. And so I'd like to move that to a date certain of August four. Brandon, do we need to do anything other than that? Make that happen? You're, you're on your.
Can't hear you, Brandon. You're unmuted, but.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry about that. When you change software, it messes with that all the time, I find. So what I was saying was, it requires a vote, but otherwise it needs to have a date certain and, you know, a motion to continue. It's a priority motion, so it can happen at any time. So it's, you can do it now if you want to.
Okay, that is my motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Any discussion? And let's go on that.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Anything, anybody else wants to do in changing? And then let's vote on the.
I would like to note that the the item under liquor licensing has been withdrawn. So if the board would like to remove that from the agenda now.
Is there a motion to remove that from the agenda now since it's been withdrawn?
Question, I think, you know, you know, search us, it'd be rethoughtless if you wouldn't.
As a new one, they withdrew as a transfer. They ran into some snags with the current owner. So they've decided just to go as a complete new license, which will come before you at a later term. So they've withdrawn this transfer application.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to delete that item. The licensing for new channel.
Is there a second, Sergeant? Any discussion? This is just to remove that one issue. Let's vote on that.
Motion passes unanimously.
And we already have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on the approval of the agenda as? As a member. Let's vote on that thing.
And that motion is successful.
I am delighted. To acknowledge with respect as a non-native people that the land on which we stand live and learn as traditional territory, the Utes, Cheyenne, and Wrappo peoples. We also recognize the fortieth contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. And now we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, moving on to audience business. Anybody is welcome to speak to the board and to the staff of the town. In audience business, we ask that you come to the podium, give us your name and address, whether you're in town or not. And restrict your comments to the issue that you want to deal with, address the entire board and not just specific members of the board. So who do we have first?
I have Crystal DeCosta first, followed by Grace Simmons.
And you'll have three minutes, had to make your presence. Four minutes, that's right. We don't have a big crowd.
Hi, I'm Crystal DeCosta, I'm at one-one-three Fifth Avenue in Lyons, Colorado. Good evening, you guys, and thanks for being here and doing what you do. At the last board of trustees meeting on July seventh, I provided the following thank you. Thanks to Kim Mitchell and all those involved with submitting and receiving a competitive state rural economic development initiative grant with the sixteen-five thousand earmarked toward reviving the existing Lyons Visitor Center, initiating the first steps in the creation of an art center space and supported the evolving Lyons Creative District. So I'm falling off tonight. Despite this disinformation appearing on social media this past week, no one intends to get rid of the visitor center, but rather enhance it, reimagine it. The Lyons Creative District looks forward. The Lyons Creative District looks forward to continued, big-picture exploration of possibilities for future opportunities in this exciting perspective revival and enhanced usage of the existing Lyons Visitor Center for the artists, arts entities, arts enthusiasts, and an all arts-bolstered local economy. Enhancing the purpose and use of the visitor center built on local partnerships presents an infused opportunity to springboard forward and collectively strengthen in ways more current and utilitarian than what one entity or organization could do solo. So that's regarding the visitor center. Regarding the LHC, thanks in advance for everybody attending the Fun Arts Trifecta Community Evening this Wednesday, the twenty third, with the Lyons Arts and Humanities Commission Tandem Art Show's opening reception, starting at the library at four thirty with piece by piece creations by locals Becky Jacobson, Barbara Yates Beasley, main stage pizza, assorted bev's, hammered dulcimer music by Mimi Wesson. Then shifting to the public viewing of this freshly hung Town Hall piece by piece art show. Their newest entry. So you can see this has been freshened up as of Friday night. The LHC's reception concludes at six, just in time. So join more art, because that's what Lyon does, Lyons does, at six thirty in the form of a pro music duo, Bonnie and Taylor Sims at Sandstone. Regarding the creative district, the currently evolving creative district board presently consists of Jeannie Moore, Beth Burton, Alyssa Pollivan, Greg Ferguson, Sophia Lemon, Michael Plussen, Eric Thoren, Grace Barrett, Diana Rolston, Hicks, Lucy Wolf, and myself, as well as acting Lyons Creative District Manager Joe Jocelyn Farrell. Our next meeting is set for Wednesday, October thirteenth, three to four thirty at the library to continue preparing for hitting the ground running when Colorado Creative Industries announces its official twenty twenty five Creative District awards later this month, early August. Area arts enthusiasts and interested in becoming involved are really encouraged to come. As always, thank you for all you guys do, the staff and the V O team and the mayor for the arts of Lyon. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Remind all of our people making a presentation that we do not respond to the individuals. As they speak, we wait until everybody's done and then each board member has an opportunity to respond, as well as the staff that was not permitted to respond. And next to Melissa.
Next is Grace Simonsen, followed by Vinnie Sparks.
Hello, I'm Vinnie's Grace Simonsen and that's six oh five Live in Court, Lyons. I'm just here tonight to briefly express my support of the recommendations to maybe to leader this evening presented by the E D C on regarding the virtual vision of flyer or feather banners in town. Over at the Mud Hutt, I've seen many of you there often. And we've started doing some new things over there and the feather banners are really easy way for us to attract some folks that are unfamiliar with us. Don't follow us on social media. We can see us going down the road, which, as we all know, is critically important in Lyons right now. I just want to express my support for the recommendations that we sent you guys. We were all spot on. Forward to see everything goes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vinnie Sparks and I live in two or four second port in Lyons and I work with Grace at the Mud Hutt. It has been now two and a half years and this is also the same time that I was here last because we went through the whole process of getting the Mud Hutt started with lots, lots, lots of you, several of you. And so it's great to report that we have become a nice and fun established little business in Lyons and it has been a great journey. I've enjoyed it a lot. And the locals are carrying us through the winter and also are very understanding when it becomes a little busier in summer. So it's a great feeling to have moved here from Arizona and to have been welcomed from by everyone so warmly. And yeah, I actually can just say that I wanted to say the same things that Grace just mentioned. We would love to have the opportunity to put a feather banner up on our, on the side of our little lot on the entrance. So for an additional sign for people and to show that we wanted to expand for a little waffle wagon that also is mobile and can be booked to go to different events and to get that started and to let ourselves be known. We don't only with Facebook and Instagram, we also would like to do a little visual on the side of the road. And yeah, I wanted to just say that I think it's a great idea, not only for the Mud Hutt, but several other businesses that I encourage that also would like that in Lyons a lot. And as soon as it doesn't block any street signs or, you know, other important informations, hopefully that is gonna get support from everyone. That's all. Thank you for all you do. Lyons is awesome.
That's all I had. We both can, that's.
Is there anybody who did not sign up who would like to speak in the voice?
Sure.
If not, trustee Henry.
Yeah, I would just comment on the feather signs. Thank you for coming and speaking about that. I, having, you know, you drive through town and there's signage, you know, on Main Street, but if you're not from here, you're not going to know what's happening. So, so to me, the challenge is going to suck. I'm in favor then. I think it'd be good just to, you know, quick app without flooding the town with so many of these and just making it a flooded town. So I think there's a balance of their proving advertising at the same time, not turning it into some even more of a type, I think it'd be.
Anything else?
Nope.
Crystal, thanks for depending on the visitor center. I, I, I find it amusing, they're reacting very strongly to one question, social media comment. Trust me, we're going forward to the department. As for the feather banners, this, this may seem a little slow in the very sudden. They're like, what? I need to get the bottom line ready to know why we are considering banning them. So we'll talk about that later.
As to the visitor center, the idea of using visitor center as an arts center has been talked about many times in recent years with no opposition, and I'm aware of a lot of support from the Lions being where. It's not, as you say in the letter, it's not going to be permanent against the person. There will be people there with information to be handed out to people who stop by. The restaurants are still operating there, which is a big reason many people stop. And to me, having an active artist outfit there with people there much of the time, including me around presents a much better face for our community. There's more, if you can let somebody to enjoy Lyons, explore Lyons than having a limited hours weekend only space. It's been kind of run down and underutilized. These are the years where we didn't need to lose the center. It's not been successful. So let's try something new, gain a lot of support. I don't think last minute negativity from one non-resident of Lyons, I shouldn't eat that at this point. And I'll, I'll speak to the feather banners later. I, I was surprised to find they pointed out already.
So thank you all for speaking and I do think the arts at the visitor center is a great idea. And yeah, I'm interested to figure everything out about them. So.
And like the others, I was not aware that feather banners were not allowed in town and I really respect that our citizens are loving and follow the code on that. So yeah, clearly we got to figure something out about that and we will address that later. Also, thank you so much for all the work you're doing regarding everything related to the visitor center. Every presentation you ever make is very thorough, understandable, easy to follow. Thank you so much for that. Anything staff wants to respond to?
I don't believe so. Just, we appreciate all of you coming out tonight and sharing your opinions and especially when it's kind of a steamy night in here. So thanks for coming up. We'll await the conversation.
All right, moving on to staff reports. One more county sheriff's office report. You don't have anything, so that's right.
No, nothing exciting ever happens. That's why I like it so much up here. I will get to that in a minute. So I have a few other things to talk about real quick. Last week I had a really good meeting with Cat the Rivers, the Sora Hub with their organizations on the Saturday rallies, was able to provide them with an ops plan from the sheriff's office. I included in there part of our policy that covers civil unrest and public demonstrations and what the expectation is from us as a organization of the sheriff's office. So we were able to just talk about some things also because as I've spoken before with an ops plan for events, it just becomes very hard to, you know, what if this, what if that and all, all of that. But we spent a good hour and a half talking about some things that they can do to make it safer for themselves that won't encroach into the vehicles and so on and so forth and some kind of like quasi evacuation plans. And I was able to give them some pointers on rally points and just what to do, when to run, when to hide, when to fight, stuff like that in the hot event that something exciting happens in this town. I think mostly what they contend with is just being safe out there. That seems to be the biggest issue when they're worried about the cars. And we made some adjustments to what they're doing. And I gave some tips on that. So I also provided the ops plan to Victoria and I don't know if it went out to you guys or not, but it's just a general operations plan. So we have something to bill off of, which included emergency numbers, contacts, things like that, and some basic rules. And again, part of our department policy that so that everybody has an understanding of what to expect when we show up that there was a complete unrest going on in Triangle. I talked with Carla Weinheimer this morning. It's about mid-year, so we always do a quick audit of our overtime budget for the summer and into the fall and later on in the year. So we're right on track. We are going to alter a little bit of our traffic in parks assignments. So we always take money out of that budget to make sure that we have funds for the parades and court security and stuff like that that is a necessity. And then we tailor up the extra duty parks patrols, the extra duty traffic cars that come up and run traffic for you guys. So we're on track with all that. No issues to speak of there. As speaking of the parks, you know, they're just, they're busy every weekend. I was up here all day on Sunday. Just busy, just absolutely busy, which is nice and expected. And again, I'm going to compliment your security team over there in the park coast. They're just doing an excellent job. The call loads that we are seeing are just nil and when we are getting called in, it's for a good reason. We had sirens at the last board meeting. It was a water rescue. It was not a water rescue. So we talked heavily about that. We had one yesterday as well that was not a water rescue. Fortunately, I was up here and was able to dictate that right away. They were reporting two lost girls. There were like ten and twelve. Within seven minutes, they showed back up and it was another one of those where mom hadn't seen him for a half hour. And it's just trying again not to push those buttons and bring in all those resources when it's not needed. So all that stuff is going great. And of course, the, the level of the river is really helping out. It's at a very nice even flow. It's very enjoyable. It's not anything too dangerous. So I think we got off good this spring and summer. So we're doing good there. Obviously, like traffic is picking up on the weekends, so we are bringing in more tickets, more proactivity out there, trying to keep people slow. It is a safety issue that we deal with all the time. So we're still working on that all the time. Cheering up for the festivals, they're coming up soon, the, this next weekend. I was up here yesterday assisting with the folks getting out from the barn down to plant the grass. All that went well, so they're packing them in and we should have a great weekend. I'll be up here all day Friday and all day Sunday. I'll open the festival for those guys and close it down. We got a really good experienced crew that will be there, bluegrass as well. I've been talking with Zach Tucker and he developed a really good incident plan in the case of an evacuation. So myself and the fire chief have reviewed that. I can't say he's reviewed yet. We just got it yesterday. I reviewed it. Looks really good. I put some feedback in and gave it back to Zach. But we're all on the same page on what to do in the event of any kind of natural disaster or unnatural disaster that happens in bluegrass with a lot of people in attendance. So again, you know, plan is a plan until it all goes to heck and then at least you have something to start with and that's what we're able to try to do. Obviously, the, the big event that took place was the armed robbery of the cert. K. I know that there's probably a lot of questions. It's an open and active investigation, so there's not a lot I can say about it. I will say that once, I will say that we are up to our necks in the investigation portion of this. We've got about two or three detectives currently working in right now and they will stay on it until it's solved. It's, I had to be very careful just because it is an open act of investigation. So everything on the front end that is probably public information by now is everything went according to plan. There was some misinformation about how long it took for cert. K to get a call into nine one one when it occurred. So they were Johnny on the spot and got the call in. We responded as quick as we could. I think we had probably eight or ten units up here in a vast array of assignments, which is what happens. It's really nice with contracts towns because one of the things that I always try to convey and just reiterate is yeah, we're contracted, we have a budget, we have a deputy, we have a detective, so on and so forth. And it seems very small. But in the event big issues like this go on, you basically get every resource that you have of the department and it stays on that type of event until it's done. Just like homicide or something to that nature. This is right up there with that. It's private, take lightly, obviously. So myself, several detectives, I spoke with the detective supervisor this morning. We had some excellent follow-up. Of course, with the two days, the day it happened and the following day. So they're working diligently on solving this and I have a lot of confidence there for. I will be good at that if there's any questions that I can answer.
Your bill, whatever question, and maybe the attorney, you can weigh in too. I noted on Sunday afternoon that we had that only problem again with people talking up and down the street. Right out of here.
Okay.
So I know, I know that in years past, we did put on bollards, timelines out there, think of parking. Very unsafe situation when you have cars of either size, people getting out, wanting to. Is that, is that your jurisdiction or is that how you work out with C D O?
It's, yeah, it's technically state highway. And obviously the towns, you know, it's a town, but the state highways run through it. But we work with town. I think we had some of the taller delineator posts that were out there that we could still, we can put back out and reevaluate that. C D O, basically C D O is not really concerned. You know, if it makes our town safer, go do it, you know, be reasonable about it. What they really are not looking for, you know, we can't go out there and dig up their highway and make it ours, right? And bring them in a, in off or something. So, but as far as like parking and safety issues like that, we could certainly readdress it. So I did notice that it was busy. It was, it's always busy along the, that's one of the areas that we patrol pretty heavily on the weekends when we get the extra duty guys up. One of the things that I changed on that plan as well is it's not on, especially on the weekends, it's not only traffic, but we incorporated the parks patrols along the bed. So a lot of times when you get such a high volume of traffic, you know, like speeding is not an issue. It's the fact you can't get anywhere is the issue. That's the fact that it's every other violation that comes into play and then it becomes the safety of all the pedestrians in the town. So this quarter here is what I have my guys try to focus on most with the Johnson right there, people crossing. So speeding and just any kind of unnecessary reckless driving and tailgating and just that anxiousness to get out of town quickly is what they contact people for along that area. But we can surely look at the safety issue of parking because I per state statute and while traffic, but I mean, you got to be off and entryway and exitway a certain amount, be like fifteen, be twenty feet like that so you can see, but I know that it, it just crowds up. So we can work on that.
Same thing. I, I would have thought that C D O would have trouble with that and they really don't.
They don't.
It is our issue to deal with. It's more of a safety issue of people, pedestrians crossing where they park. So if we want to do something on the ends to help with line of sight for turning, I think we can. But they really, that is, it's their control and they, they don't have an issue with it.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a traffic safety concern from the SAM Act. So as you know, they're starting the construction there. And I've heard, I haven't seen anything but it's right out from Lehman. So the traffic, so the. And I've heard, I haven't seen anything but it's right out from Lehman, so the traffic, so the trucks aren't going back down to Boulder is what I've heard, I don't know.
That's what the original plan was that I read, that's what they were supposed to be doing, to force the trucks uh eastbound.
So, so what I've seen is trucks pull right and there's that next road with the dead end, they pull there, then do a U-turn. And I'm concerned, cause I know in Longline, in front of Home Depot, they did the same thing. And there's been a number of wrecks on over that shut down the whole street and just people pull out of right out of, of Home Depot, pull the U-turn, brash, so it's just a matter of time there, it seems so.
So we can surely enforce that, um if it's, well. We won't be able to enforce it, they're not breaking the law, but we can talk to C M X and their driver, and their drivers, they we can just encourage them not to do that again. Um I would have to look at the area specifically and just see. If it's a double yellow and they're not crossing the double yellow for business or they live on the other side, cause you can cross a double yellow like that, like on B P Highway. Um if you're traveling, you know, north and you live on the, the west side, you can cross that double yellow. If there's a purpose to cross that double yellow, obviously with caution. Uh so let me look into that and see if I can come up with an answer, because if you're doing it to do a U-turn, I can't do anything on the U-turn, but I can maybe do something on crossing a W O and that is not necessary. So I can look into.
Well, then my concern is once the, the construction is finished. And then they just defeat all that work time, keeping the, the whole over in place at current time. Thank you.
Anything else?
So I've got a question about the festival evacuation. I was in the curb build area, yes, last week.
I'm sorry.
I was in the curb build area last week for a day. Of all, some of the residents down there, some of them flooded and up the farm. And from the time that they got the evacuate warning, through the time someone could get out to Riverside area and a vehicle or on foot was between thirty to forty-five minutes. And that got me to thinking about how many people in vehicles, including some large campers are down in both of the campground's in that area during festivals. And my first view of the flood, looking over the hill like the fifth avenue, it's looking down the I don't know. So in particular, so do the evacuation plans involve trying to get out the people's out of there or just get the people out?
Get the people out. So um I've read through it, once it's very detailed and then skimmed it over. Um and he's got kind of what we have already in the county, like a three, three-tiered type of system, it's kind of like a ready, set, go type of plan. So I do know working the festivals as long as I have twenty plus years, um the the weather watch is critical, we watch it very, very closely, if Bluegrass does it, we do it. We're in constant contact with our uh E C N or our we, they keep changing that abbreviation to it, but our emergency management system. So if anything's coming, we usually got a heads up and we start that plan, so that's kind of what Zach has started is, you know, hey, we're ready, this is a potential threat. So get ready now, that gives them hours in advance to be a little bit more prepared and planned. Um it is a nightmare because it's a one-way in, one-way out, and that's the most scariest thing for anybody. Um Laverne Johnson Park being kind of the same way, except for that back area. Um but then it's set, so there's parameters that are set in his ops plan and with us is the Sheriff's Office of where we go from there. So um when we see a criteria to met where a storm or something like that is, or the, the rainfall in S Park and upstream is enough that we know that it's gonna rise down here, then that sets up that second tier and so on. One of the things that he explained in his ops plan pretty thoroughly and, you know, the best laid plan, right, has to go out with people understanding and reading it and then doing it. Um so it's, it's just like on an airplane, you know, someone in Beverly's gotta carry their briefcase off when you're told not to, so that will be the issue and their staff has been directed that all cameras and stuff stay depending on, of course, the issue. But in the case of the flood, I mean, it's get the people out and that's the primary focus of ops. Is get people out, everything else stays. And I will say again, you know, that, that all depends. My biggest fear was after the Vegas incident or the Las Vegas incident where the gunman uh was at high ground out of the hotel at the concert, right? That's why we put people on the cliffs now, um because that oversight is just, you know, it's a it's a easy soft target and so again, depending on the type of action that's going on will definitely um depend on what the evacuation and what the shelter in place kind of gives to the play. An active shooter type of incident, it's a, it's a shelter in place, it's get to hard cover, it's get to all the buildings. I've gone through uh the whole um, the whole grounds with Craig, Theo and Zach and, and we've gone through what we believe are kind of like the top things that may or could happen that would just be very chaotic and those things are up, it's a fire, it's a flood, it's an active shooter, active farmer, it's what we call it now, or just any kind of terror cap. So yeah, that's, i- as long as people understand that and he's got his whole staff included. Um we have the staff meetings, we generally have, we should have one coming up. Prior to this festival, if we're all meet and just make sure that we're on the same board and go from there. I have answered, yeah, it's a tough question, but it's uh those are things I get paid to stay up at night and think about and sweat over, so uh we try to do our best and we cross our fingers all the time. I will say, and I think you all know that um Bluegrass has just had a impeccable safety record over there, we've really, we've had some incidences over there for sure where some freak thunderstorms have come through and uh lightning is always kind of a big issue over there um and strikes, but uh during festival times, we've never had a water rise or a water type issue, and we've never had a fire or anything like that, so not, not good. Um just kind of your minor things that didn't cause any kind of mass evacuation, but uh it's, it's, it's on our minds all the time and we have some plans in place.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing so you know for our own properties as well. Um Laverne Johnson Park and, and Riverbend, both are one-way in, one-way out situations. And so also in Riverbend, um as well as getting people out, it is in their emergency plan that when we go into a flood warning stage, they are to remove all the timings. And um that's how that works. When we get to that point at Laverne Johnson, we go door to door to every um to every R V unit, and I'm sure they would do it for tents too, we've had to do it a couple times to let people know we are in a, you know, a high risk of flooding and you need to, to leave the area. So we, we do take that extra step.
And, and I will add on to that with the county part of it, through the O D M, when we get to that level as well, then it becomes a street issue for deputies on the street and a call-in. So our SWAT teams and um our call-in folks are on standby for that all the time, there are not only SWAT members, but there are resources that we tap into cause they're on call twenty-four seven. So in the event we need bodies on the street, they all have take-home vehicles. Uh they respond in, so if we get to a certain level like that where we know something's coming, um it is absolutely gonna be a door-to-door thing, you're, this place can be flooded with officers and first responders going door-to-door, along with the immigration notifications and the individual iPhone notifications that people sign up for. So uh I don't think anybody is gonna uh not know that something's going on.
It was amazing to see how quickly your folks responded with fire, you were going right now and stone jamming.
And especially those communities that have been through a major disaster, we're much more aware, I think all of us watch our weather much more than we do go for it.
And we have a warning sign.
Any other questions for Sergeant Chris?
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Things like, like, like Friday night, we're reminded in very visceral ways. This is how you're here all this time, taking care of this, and it is very meaningful.
Well, we definitely appreciate it, um everybody up here again just loves coming up here and working here. Uh Dan Brandon did accept the offer to come up and be our day shift deputy, so um he's got, he was broken into some Lions folks and some calls and luckily I was up here to kind of give him some backstories on some things. Um because he's, he's never been up in this part of the, of the county, he's always been a south, uh what I call southern boy in the county, in the down in Superior, right, down in the Southern Hemisphere, so. Uh but he's enjoying it, I think he's gonna be an excellent fit, he's a super nice guy. He's pretty tall, he's kind of built like Mitch and got some wild blonde hair, so you'll see him on the, out there and uh he's very excited to do um he's had a really good career and it's been very kind of an engineer-based career, he's been very busy, very uh high-speed, low drag and he's kind of looking for a little bit more of the community policing and doing other things in police work. Um the things that I enjoy up here as well, just the problem solving and getting with the community, so uh he's gonna be a great addition to Lions, so I'm happy to have him. Live for at least uh at the end of the year, through ship bid, but I believe that uh Alright, everybody have a great night, thank you.
Thank you, I do have some bad news to start with, we'll start with the bad, but we're good. Um the water service line that roped this afternoon um is not repairable tonight. The, the line just keeps deteriorating every time they touch it. So um Town Hall, River Cliff, Embar Avenue to Fork will not have water overnight. Um and uh so we have, we are going door to door to those people and letting them know where they can get water to fill up their uh supply, so that if you came home after work and don't have water at home, um we're providing that, I'm not gonna say it publicly, cause I don't want everyone going there, but they do have access to water um that they need to fill buckets or whatever they need for the night, so we will be without overnight and first thing.
Is this the same place I was repaired last year or is it?
Uh right next door to it, same conditions of the line, it's their service line. It's so the main, and then the service lines are original from when those homes were built and they are just disintegrating. So. I did wanna just uh update, and Lisa's not here now. Um we did have our staff level meeting with Boulder County regarding the I G A and um disappointed also to tell you that um it was not a very productive meeting, so we're going to try again this week. Uh it felt like folks were not nearly as prepared as they needed to be and we took most of our meeting catching them back up. And so um we're gonna try again this week to be able to bring you back something uh to bring, well, it'll be the next meeting will be um July twenty-eighth with the two elective officials. Bishop and Lowcham and Mayor Robin are, are planning to be there and then we'll update the public and the board, hopefully the workshop on August fourth.
So is, is this a, a classic example of why working from home is not a good idea? I mean, it seems like there's a lot of miscommunication within their system.
You know, I don't, I, I guess that's up to them to decide if, if that works well for them, but uh it felt like some people uh were still working off of versions from before the task force. So it just, it was rather frustrating. And we tried to express the, the two items that were important to the trustees that were kind of these are, are, are non-negotiables for us and they kept going, one, one person kept going back to their main nineteen manual of all the things that were there in that bush bowl, so we just didn't get very far. There's a lot of time catching up, so.
And got nowhere on our two issues.
Uh no, they actually were just dumbfounded of why we would want that. And we expressed that that was in the twenty-twelve and has worked well for all of us and we'd like those to continue. Um if for, if you need that refresher, it was the um that the rural preservation area that we would be notified when they wanted to do development there so that we could comment. And if they were going to buy parks and open space in our primary planning area, we would be notified and I'll just leave it at that, I, I actually called the director of, of, of planning the next morning and said boy, that was not a productive meeting. So um
Those were again, the two thousand twelve?
Yes. Yep.
And the parks open space was in the name that they signed, was long back in twenty twenty.
And we did ask that, like, we would like to be handled the same as they are and no explanation, so it was just not very productive, so we'll hope this week we get a lot for it. I gave you some updates on what's going on in Newsport Port this last week. Aaron included some waste water treatment facility updates. There is potential due to failure of more equipment that we might get a compliance advisory from the state. Um we aren't anticipating any penalties since it was um due to a hydraulic issue that really no one could have prepared for. Um but we are happy to say we received four proposals on the uh, the new upgrades. And staff are going, or not staff, a committee is going through those right now, we'll bring you back recommendation on August fourth to move forward with the upgraded blowers and other um improvements they're planning. And then um pavement program is starting up on the twenty-eighth, they're gonna wait till just right after the festival. And everyone has been notified about uh if it is affecting in front of their home, everyone's been notified. And as you can see, uh we continue to tell, ask people to stay off the same green trail until it is done. Which should be here in the next week and then um Mayor Robin is hoping, hoping to have a ribbon cutting with the funders um in mid-August, so we'll get you a date on that as soon as we can. And then uh community relations, you guys could all keep up with that, but we wanna remind people that starting Wednesday of this week uh Planet Bluegrass is leasing uh Laverne Johnson, so it will be open only to local walk-in traffic that is not planning to stay picnic play, that they can walk through, they can uh use amenities. Uh Lights Off Lions, they've changed that name, it used to be Lights Out Lions. They decided to call it Lights Out Lions, is planned for August sixteenth in stands in uh Bone Park. And some of you have probably noticed that the wayfinding pedestrian signs are starting to go up. Um those are specifically directed toward the walking public and visitors and uh they include a little how long you should plan it will take. And that was a high recommendation from the funder and uh the sign makers, that that just helps people who aren't familiar to gauge uh how long it will take you to get there. Next to come will be the auto-directional and the pedestrian directional signs uh and there are two very large signs that would be at our entrances. Right now, that C dot still has to give us the okay of where we wanna place those. Other than that, I think everything is probably pretty self-explanatory, very, very active arts this spring and summer. Um for those of you who don't know how that works, we lease our public sculptures for two years. And then they get rotated out, that's why we never get tired of them, we always have new things. So we, they have placed ten public sculptures, new ones, um just the last couple. And there be questions?
Yeah, I uh, believe it or not, I actually, I actually took a P D, I think it's a long before and I we got it all mapped on it and I that's a twenty-three percent reduction. Yeah, maybe Vera was here, maybe you're sitting inside of it, but do you know the inside of this, the reason for that, has it, has it been more stricter enforcement of grease traps and side streaming and that not? I mean, it's, it's a year long, a year reduction.
Sure, I would say it's a mixture of that, as well as whenever we get into the summer months, we have more um water usage due to visitors, I mean, think at your own home, how much your water changes. So the actual, uh I hate to use that, but it, it's a little more diluted than usual. I mean, that's not a solution to, to it, but it does have an impact on it. So usually, it's probably both, it's uh monitoring the side streaming, grease traps for sure, we have um I'm trying to do if we've had any restaurants closed in the, those are June numbers, right? Um
Yeah, I was, I mean, actually it's everything. But you're in early to
Yeah. I think that'd be great, I don't know if utilities talked about it, they analyzed it, if you want to comment, trustee Brown.
Yeah, I think there, there is a very sharp expectation to use the D. I don't know the details, well, I'd get ahead of them, but Aaron has also been ongoing discussions with the brewers and distillers in town, C D O, how much they are processing in plants, I think that may have some effect on that as well.
I mean, these figures are, we, we were terminated under the rules for since fifteen ninety thirties, our costs would be there. Running close.
That's a very.
What's the plan was designed for way less than that.
Six hundred and five.
Other questions?
Um, wayfinding, this doesn't really relate to the wayfinding, but I don't, I mean, you know, with the seasonal traffic going through town. There was still little signs of, say, thirty-six, right, seven left and there's always the confusion and I, I don't know if there's been dialogue with C dot to say. We put signs further out of town that say if you're going to S S, get in the right lane.
They actually a few years back, I'm trying to remember, probably after the flood. They did put it on the three hundred block to try to back it up one block. They put thirty-six right lane, seven left. Um, you're thinking even further than that?
Yeah, just because today's traffic's backed up. I, it's because it's always everybody's jockeying their get over. It just seems like some better wayfinding would.
I can sort of pass that off.
Let me get the new sign, the sign.
Oh, it's ordered.
Yeah, okay.
We got our, it's ordered.
Yeah.
That's great recommendations. I will pass those both along.
Work.
One comment on the highlighting given your report about suggestion of looking into a. Possibly a water fountain or issue, Main Street. This one trustee thinks uh I am skeptical about both the capital cost of doing that. Also for water rights, it'd be necessary to refer to the ongoing maintenance costs. I think we have enough um. Projects pending in our capital items to be. Be reticent about creating new, new ones. And those would not be among my priorities, things that have borders like water lines and.
And if it was my feedback, if it was for another bathroom?
You have one, the Whistler Center right now. A block away. Yeah. And public bathrooms, I'm worried. Structure cost aren't cheap. They gotta be able to provide, we have the water rights for them. Shh, got thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars and maintenance and cleaning costs. It's nature. So uh we're gonna maintain the one in good standards. At the Whistler Center, adding another one block away, I'm not sure that's it. Why choose to go on since she's my opinion.
You done with? Alrighty, thank you for your report. I've got no further questions. I'm not sure I uh. I would want to know more about. Uh, of the restroom, particularly if, if it could be in four oh two or related to four oh two as they build.
Or in the building and partner with them.
Yeah, that would cut down costs for several.
I think in talking with like the St. Green Market, that is one of the busiest restrooms. People, I hear that a lot from businesses is people. Walk in and they want a restroom, right? Because they just, they need a restroom and. Most of them have signs, you know, restroom not for public use and it's um. It comes back to that visitor friendly, business friendly again, but. Uh, we, we could spend a little time just finding out, but not a lot of stuff if you'd like us to.
I, I, I would like to spend some time, thank, yeah, give us a little bit more.
Or if, or if they would build it and we'd be willing to offset some of the costs maybe for it if they welcomed it.
It could be a good thing to talk with them about because if, if they have ended up with a general story, Derek. That's gonna bring people into their environments. So I think that's worth a conversation.
Okay. All right. I'll just, we'll, we'll keep it on radar by not focusing.
Thank you very much. Um, legal update.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. So it sounds like Victoria already gave you an update on municipal court, um, what happened there. Very active municipal court day out last Thursday. You know, happy that we were able to resolve one of those matters. He's at the other one for trial in September. Um, so still hoping to have a resolution there, but um it's gonna be a challenging one, I think, to get to a point where um we can stop enforcement for that, for that particular property. Any specific questions about municipal court, what happened? I'm happy to answer those. Um, otherwise, um, I was asked to comment briefly on uh Camu and there were legal, their legislation, legislative report, excuse me. Uh, for the upcoming session, I have mentioned a few times now, but believe it or not, um legislative stuff is already happening. And one of the things that is um currently in the works is a bill that was pulled late last year. That affects our municipal utilities quite greatly and that is the changes to the Colorado um energy targets. Um, we sometimes call it the C E P. They are currently set at one hu- at one hundred percent a reduction of two thousand five levels by twenty fifty. Uh, the polls administration's plan is to move that up to twenty forty. Um, you know, and, and that's pretty aggressive, at least from, you know, a lot of municipal, municipal utilities perspectives on being able to get the kind of reductions in place. Uh, to, you know, make that happen ten years sooner than we thought. And so at least Camu's taking a position that they would like to, you know, see either this not happen or being, being some sort of. Um, alternative methodology, whereas if costs raised by a certain point, um, you don't have to meet one hundred percent by twenty fifty. Um, but that is very much underway right now. At some point, you know, the town probably needs to figure out. Um, you know, what its position is on that as we are a member of Camu. Camu is a very diverse membership. Um, you know, we, there are places like Aspen, there's places like Carl Springs, um, and it's okay to not be one hundred percent in agreement, but it will influence. Um, you know, what Camu's lobbying position is on this because it's probably the biggest thing for Camu um next year down the data center bill. So. Um, was asked to give that update. And so if you have any questions about that, let me know, but at some point we should. Um, you know, either direct U E B or internally decide, you know, what our position is on that. Um, lastly, I just want to mention that we are working on development plan, and excuse me, annexation agreement. Uh, for the new annexation that's coming in, um, Lisa and Aaron and I have been working on that. Um, so I'll be coming to you as part of that annexation uh process. So, um, that's my legal report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for attorney Goodman? Thank you very much. There are no ordinances or participations. And so podcast guests, which are really, uh, I can send agenda in the record.
Yes, item one is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine, a resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, accepting the twenty twenty-four audit. Item two is resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty, resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, accepting the flagstone culvert stormwater study by Martin and Martin LLC. Item three is resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one, resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, accepting public improvements from summit housing. And issuing final payment per agreement. Item four is resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two, resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, awarding a construction agreement to T F W Construction LLC. For the P R V five upgrades. Item five is resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three, a resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, awarding a noise study contract to E D I Incorporated. Item six is resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-four, a resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, approving the sixth amendment to the professional services agreement. With Borox Engineering Incorporated for the St. Brain Trail extension. Item seven are the July seventh, twenty twenty-five regular board of trustees meeting minutes and item eight are the July accounts table.
Thank you. Is there anything anybody wants to remove from the consent, from the consent agenda? If not, accept a motion. For approval of the consent agenda?
No approval with the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And we'll take the note.
That motion has to end.
Uh. Boards and commissions, uh. Oh, I think we've got a report from you from the economic, uh, by calendar commission.
Everybody, glad you're here as always. Um, this is one of our, you know, every now and then we, we show up and just be of service to you all. So I have. A couple of things that I wanted to give statements on and report on, but in general, most importantly perhaps, just wanted to see if I can answer questions. Um, on any topics that are, that's gonna be B C, but uh two topics I'll make statements on and get your questions on and then we'll come up to other things. One, the feather banner temporary sign that was spoken through earlier a bit. Um, and then also the demolition moratorium and then it's the preservation. I, I know that's been punted down the road a little bit, the conversation, but wanted to have two quick comments on, on each of those topics. And then uh hopefully get some discussion on, on what events and. Uh, we've provided you all with a two-page uh just summary of our thoughts around the temporary feather banner uh conversation. I just wanted to point specifically to the very top of page one uh of, of that document that talks to. We break this down as a short term and a longer term um issue. Many of you all in your statements earlier tonight said that you were quite surprised. That there was a ban on feather banners. Um, speaking, working with Lisa a little bit, I think there's probably multiple aspects of our current code that you might be surprised on. And so we would recommend just a, a longer term, like larger directing staff to do a larger audit of the entire sign code. And to take that up conversation before the end of this year. So that's the longer term or medium term conversation. We'd love to have the short term conversation act as soon as possible. To, hopefully, if you look at the very bottom of that, bottom of page two, the end of that document that we said. This is our recommendation of a suggested short-term amendment to just allow feather banners. Um, much, much of the first part of that wording, that suggestion comes from the Salida code. Which I find is very interesting comparison to, to um Lyons, Lyta, though for outdoors and arts and looked to Lyons. And so that, that's the first part, the narrative part of that code are suggested, uh, suggested in that document comes out graphically from Slida. And then the restrictions, which come from our current code largely around like our currently sandwich boards are allowed in our current sign code. And those restrictions, that's A through I there, the bulleted list. Those are all restrictions that are currently in our code that we agree with with sandwich board. So we think the amendment could be pretty darn minor. Let's just have, let's just be more business friendly, allow feather banners and have some existing just common sense restrictions there. So. I don't know. I'd love to hear from either members of the board or you, Lisa, and just how quickly this short-term amendment could happen. I, I don't know. And maybe Brandon, Brandon's not on anymore.
You're mistaken.
Or he's there to just hear a little bit of how quickly we can act on that.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, are you done?
I'm done with that part.
Okay. I, I would like to uh ask attorney Dippen, is there a way to do that that would not require an ordinance?
Not that I know of. I was looking through our existing code and I couldn't find an option that currently exists. I mean, the only thing. We could do is, you know, lack of enforcement. But I mean, that, that is not a great way to run um a government for the most part. And so if you do emergency ordinance, you know, that would, that I don't know if this quite um necessitates an emergency ordinance for a public health and safety perspective. Um, I will say that, you know, sandwich signs are allowed as a temporary sign currently. So that's maybe one option if people are looking at. Um, you know, alternative temporary signs that wouldn't, you know, be a permanent installation, but. At the end of the day, I think we just need to update our code. It's quite outdated. Um, I think we've recognized that for a while and it's haven't gotten to the, the hard work of updating it.
And the emergency ordinance is only for health and safety. It couldn't be for economics?
You shouldn't be. I mean, that's, that's, they're not, you know, according to the state statutes, they're supposed to be health, safety and welfare. I mean, some people try to jam. That into welfare, but it's, you know, it's not typical, put it that way.
Alright.
Or are we gonna do something else that is on the agenda in post about, can we declare a moratorium on sign code enforcement as it pertains to. Feather banners while we're considering it and maybe the sign code.
Yeah, I mean, typically moratoriums are on things coming in, not, you know, enforcement going out. I'm not aware of someone who's done a moratorium of that nature. Um, I certainly no, have not seen one. Um.
So to answer your question though regarding timing, so looking at our code, just to clarify, um, our code refers to these as wind signs. And they are in our prohibited sign. So you, if you search feather banner, it's not gonna come out. It's identified as a wind sign, which. Mean maybe is undefined to a degree in terms of interpretation, but you know, if you Google wind sign, it's feather banner. So that's how we got to, they're not allowed. Um. Staff attended the E B C meeting and um, you know, met with Paul and we kind of massaged this language a little bit. I do think. From staff's perspective, sandwich board signs and feather banners kind of have two different audiences. So sandwich board signs are really kind of pedestrian. Scale and really intended, I think, for use by pedestrians when you're on the sidewalk. Hey, what's their specials? You know, kind of draw them in from a pedestrian. Feather banners, I think, in my opinion, are more geared toward, you know, vehicular, right? So they're usually taller, maybe one, you know, kind of broad. Statement on the feather banner. So I think it's not necessarily a conflict to allow both. Um, I think again, different audiences. Um, we talked a little bit about the, you know, kind of high quality bringing them in every night might be a way to ensure that um they remain in good repair. They talked a little bit about the timeframe. Should we allow them for sixty days a year, ninety days a year? And I think. Enforcement on those kind of timeframes get tricky, you know? So how do we track those days, things like that? So I guess in terms of timeframe, I would want to understand from you all, how urgent is this? And. If you want to do engagement with the broader community or businesses. What timeframe we would need to do that, to hear some feedback or alternatively, you know, I think the language that is in your packet, should you agree with that, is. Pretty really close. Um, it would need to go to P C D C and then the board for first and second reading. So. You know, by the time we prep it, I would assume maybe it should.
So the first question I have, is there anybody here who believes we should continue with the current code as it relates to feather banners? No. No. Yes, Brandon.
I just want to make one clarification. Um, you know, when I was referring to sandwich boards, uh, only for the sake of. They're really the only kind of temporary commercial sign that's currently allowed, not to say that they're a replacement or anything else, just. You know, in looking at the code, they're really all there is in terms of a temporary commercial sign. And so if you want to look at other kinds, we'd have them in the code to allow it.
Yeah, thank you.
So it would take a couple of months to, to all of us together. Can we, is, is there a way? For us to just say we're not going to enforce it between them and them or to say, well, they are. Feather banners. They're, it, it's.
They're not, we're so.
Yeah, they're not, they're not signs. I mean, is it, if, if we're talking a couple of months, you know, I want people, particularly in the high season, to be able to do that now.
We can, you know, I mean, priori, we always prioritize different things from a code enforcement perspective based on kind of what is. Um, but it's hard to say on the record that we can't enforce our, we've talked about this with the noise ordinance, right? This is the same rationale. We have a noise ordinance right now that's. Challenging to enforce. We should fix it. Um. So, you know, again, I think to the degree you're interested in amending the code, and I do agree with Paul. Our sign code and Brandon and I have talked about that has, has a lot of issues and I think we could break that off as a second and bigger engagement process. And to that point. If people do not like the feather banner allowances, um, if we go early on. In this first quick draft and by, you know, later next summer or whenever we get to a full rewrite and people do not like that, we can pull that back. So. Um, but I would hate to have folks make investment in feather banners if then the code doesn't get adopted. So go ahead, Brandon.
Yeah, I mean, I, just that, that point in enforcement or lack thereof, you know, the, the important thing is, you know, equal treatment. So if we're not. You know, if, if hypothetically, I would never, you know, recommend this. Um, you know, enforcement wasn't happening for whatever reason, it is, it would just be applied equally is the important part. So.
What, what's required to repeal an ordinance?
An ordinance?
What?
An ordinance is required to appeal an ordinance.
Uh, it'll be a full two months, first reading, second reading and thirty days publication.
Can anybody tell me to go off? Safety aspect is.
I think people are concerned of safety and also just the, the look and feel. Historically, it can just look like a yard sale. Um, but the, the, this is, this is why, you know, a lot of towns have historically had these bans, but I've gotten rid of them because. They're really good, the signs are made really well and better and safer than ever. Brandon?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, you know, first off, the, the vintage of the sign code is twenty fourteen, but if I were to actually, I suspect that is actually much older than that based on some of the language that's used. And so you can imagine nineteen nineties, there wasn't the kind of feather signs we have today. And so I think what people were afraid of is having a bunch of inflatable tubemen or something of that nature. Um, you know, without regu- regulation, you get a lot of that and then you're looking like a very different community, um, when you have that kind of, uh, you know, that, that stuff.
The code doesn't specify on their property versus town right of way, does it?
Well, the draft language would allow the similar, same as the sandwich board. So on the public properties or.
There was an exception right now, like if it's on their property and not on the right.
No, it just says. No, it just says exempt for prohibited and broers.
Yeah, and there there is a public right-of-way section. It has to be permitted and as it goes through all the same, you know, restrictions. So that's sixteen nine thirty.
Yeah, I don't know that there's anything going around that. Um.
David, do you have any?
No, I'm I'm in support of it. I think we need to do it ASAP. I think, uh. I mean, kind of the essence. So I think we should be prioritized from our code components. And and then my concern is it's too junked up. You know, so I think if we do this and we learn a little bit more, I mean, uh. And maybe we can tweak it as we move forward. And I don't know, these signs are that expensive if we go into a pen and sell your own, so. They're a couple hundred bucks.
And I, yeah, I would agree. And I would imagine, you know, you might buy one for one season anyway, and then maybe by next summer, they'd be looking at updating it and replacing it. So, um. We'll check to see with the public notice schedule, you know, how quickly we can get this um to PCDC. Are there any concerns with the language that is in the proposal?
And Brad, yeah, just your mind and your thoughts about this. I used to work. And anything about how we proceed with that? And yet any comments on what's been presented by the EBC on this? Uh, in terms of if that's, if that's a template we want to use, let's get going on an ordinance.
And to be clear, Attorney Dittman, I don't know that he's. You know, plus they reviewed this language. So I think, you know, it it may be different when it comes back to, but I think the intent. Um, from a design perspective, staff is comfortable with.
I don't have any major concerns looking at it. Those, I don't see anything obvious.
Thank.
Can you use some?
That can change through them.
The only thing I saw was paragraph six, the sign is not in, the best way to be able to travel. We should add, I think, the law which is, somebody should, it also should not block any. Street signs where there's. If it was on the sidewalk. Block the highways, seven, thirty-six, that kind of thing. My comments, we should leave them as expeditions. We de-emphasize uh portionally in the meantime. And maybe it's the same time game, but. If necessary, either expedition should repeal these provisions here to where now. We can get a new one on the next meeting's agenda. But the first, the first possible meeting's agenda, I have to notice what's good. See something we have fixed as soon as possible.
Anybody feel there, right?
No, I. Full square for that. Um, one more question. Are we just someone needs temporary signs? I mean, the times that you bring in there.
They typically are considered a temporary sign. They don't require until they can prevent.
Yeah, so we talked about the timing of things. If you look at the different codes, there's varying time limits on things, no more than thirty days, no more than ninety days. Um, as Lisa was saying, for me, it's like impossible. There will be no enforcement on those. So for for me, I think keep it simpler to to just say it should be a professional sign. It should be well kept. It should be taken in every night. It should be saved to the public and leave it at that. That's what we came to it from the EBC. So there's, that's why in our language is no time limit.
Impermanent typically also implies like a building permit or it's permanently affixed to a building. It's not temporary in nature, where this would be required to come in and out. Every night, so um, it's a little bit of a semantics thing in a code, but.
True, true. We also would ask the.
Those are wind signs. We could be really clear, and what I'm thinking is maybe we create a new term, you know, feather banner, and I think an accepted term in some newer sign codes. And so that way we're really clear that we are talking about this specific type of sign and maybe even include it in the records so that. Everybody knows that it's not the the wind men.
And we can call that one. The the wind people that terrify my youngest three. Going to go anywhere near any street.
No big gorillas.
Um, yeah, I think there's concerns. Let's go in with that. Thank you so much for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, of course.
Uh, yeah, that's that's something that I, and we, you know, we've heard from our business owners earlier tonight as well, our employees. About this.
Great. And to switch here, the other thing that I just want to make quick comment on is the demolition moratorium that. I know you all are in active conversation around this, more preservation. Uh, EBC did talk about this last week, and we are a hundred percent see the value of historic preservation, both from cultural and economic perspective, a hundred percent. And with such significant, perhaps unprecedented, I don't know, just emptiness and for sale properties. If we just feel like it might not be the right time to do any sort of moratorium. But to really, you know, put a flag up for potential development that we really need in the town right now. That could be another just red flag for the potential uh future owners and developers. So we would encourage perhaps to delay that and not approve the moratorium. Or if it does move forward, the devil would be the detail on how that is worded. And so that flag that goes up to potential developers has some very specific languaging on the the why and this kind of. The future that wouldn't be onerous for a developer if they were coming to town.
Yeah. Yeah, I realize we're we're pushing this off to a date certain because. Members are gone, but I I was thinking about this before the meeting. I thought. Can we not just get the EBC, ECDC, HBC together? Because I think that to your point, all the devils in the details.
Right.
Uh, I think we all went downtown to look. The historic nature, how we get there, there's lots of different. Right. So I just thought it'd be worthwhile to start having that discussion among those three groups. Because I think that's where we're going to do it. I don't feel comfortable over here saying, let's do the moratorium and go forward with, you know.
When did your committee meet?
Um, we need month to month. We met last week.
Okay.
Take that kind of a position statement.
Uh, I I'm happy to provide an official position statement.
You know, the one thing, Paul, uh. That I noted when I was sitting over the moratorium is that. So the town belongs to the Colorado Main Street, the Red Benz, for the last fifteen years. You guys are supposed to be board directly. And among the precepts of that is that uh. Reserve historic charm.
For sure.
Right? So if it doesn't say, um. Not designate the store, the building, rather, would be a little store, a charm, like the town must be maintained. And we tried to do that with the with the hotel. You know, they're gonna, once over, they're open, they're gonna use sandstone, and it's gonna look like the rest of the town.
Hundred percent.
So, um. I'm not gonna offer a opinion on this now, but I I just thought that was an interesting perspective that.
Yeah, hundred, we are for preservation, a hundred percent, but the even a word like moratorium. Um, can be just seem overly cautious and onerous for for potential developers. In this time where we need that.
All right, this, this. Uh, um, this is a totally separate matter, Paul.
Sure.
In my first term and in this last term. I've come up with an idea about how how to drive the park goalers to the local businesses.
Right.
I think it was, I think it was shown, I don't know, once. Four or five years ago, some survey was done. People who blow our parks generally don't solicit the businesses downtown.
Right.
I don't know if you guys have ever discussed this as a way to how to drive people, why. Very simple idea was. You put. Incentives on the park cards and tourist vehicles for the price of one at the dairy map. Five dollars off a Neo at Oscar rooms or something like that. Anything to get the people to take notice that. We have these amenities in town, and here's all the chance you have to use if you want to go down the agenda.
Well, I love that you mentioned that because I was in town this weekend as well, and you know, the officer store today is like epic numbers of people in the park. I, you know, the third thing that I was gonna say today, today was not necessarily an update, but just like a huge gratitude to town staff and specifically Kim Mitchell. But I think it's somewhere on the screen up there um for the wayfinding signs. But I actually think the wayfinding signs is a huge first step to do exactly what you're talking about of like. All of the wayfinding signs from all the parks saying downtown this way, less than a ten-minute walk. And so that that I think is step one. I I love your idea as well, and we've tried to work with other businesses. The, I mean, fundamentally, each individual business would be, would be responsible of kind of providing some sort of incentive like that. And I do think it is a bit of a chamber of commerce conversation, which which we know is is a little bit in a intermediary stance. Uh, stance right now. Uh, but I I think more and more ideas like that, we're happy to kind of work with businesses, provide those ideas. And then fundamentally, the businesses have to have the bandwidth and the staff to. And and the wherewithal and to kind of do that. But I think the wayfinding signs is a huge step in our direction.
I do like the idea of suggesting firstly, I write that those groups sit together and discuss this, um, but we'll have to bring that up. As we've done, we have a conversation on the fourth. Since we already worked it to a certain. On that particular issue. Anything else on the EBC?
That's it for me. Just whatever questions you all have for me on any topic.
Seems like that's it. Thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
Always a pleasure, my friends.
Okay. Moving on, uh, general business, we have new resolution twenty twenty-five dash four seven to a date certain of August fourth. And, um. So we move on to discussion direction on from the workshop on how Austin's request. Uh, for building permit to be refunded. I do the change in the fire requirement for any use. Uh, as we re-discuss this at the workshop. And I will go ahead and begin on this one. Uh, I do think it's really very unfortunate that. Uh. We did hear of this dilemma from Mr. Austin and. Uh, quite clearly, and including his frustration. Uh, with this particular issue. And that did impact my decision to be one to say whether it relates to ADUs or that we should not in fact have. Uh. Sprinkle requirements. I do note that that was in fact before three vote at the time that it it happened. And I am, I do not feel good about that. At the same time, a couple of things that. Are are clear to me. One is that there is no direct correlation between the fees paid. Uh, and the shift in this code. And so that that was a. Uh, something that is was arbitrarily requested. Um, that I think was just commensurate to the amount of money that it cost to put that. Uh, and which was an initial cost of just under twelve thousand dollars. So it it's a, was looking for a way to get back a substantive amount of that. My concern about that is the precedent it sets. Particularly as it relates to other issues that have already uh been dealt with in the past. Um. For instance. How uh McIntosh shares of for whom they're appropriate and how they're used. And we traditionally historically said that that can only be used for affordable housing. Or we to make a change in that, then I'm quite sure we would have other builders on our few remaining building. Uh. Lots left in town that would be coming to us and saying, well, okay, wait, wait, wait. Uh, you know, we already paid for CBT shares, and now we feel like we need something as well. And I believe it's our fiduciary responsibility to be looking at for the financial best interest of the town. And my concerns for one individual, uh, town resident who's doing his best to make it work. Um, does not match my sense of what our fiduciary responsibility is. And so what I would like to hear from our staff. Are, uh, is, are there some accommodations that could be made? That two hundred and fifty dollar figure that was mentioned. Um, early on, are there others? That were not real costs to us, are not taxes, and that could be done. And we've asked you in a workshop for. A little bit of uh thought on that. Um, these are my thoughts on that, and I'd like to hear from the others before we come to the staff with your information on that data.
Um. You may be surprised, you saying this, I'm in favor of of uh refunding the full fees. And I, well, first of all, I was the only one, I think, that voted against this. Uh, but but I think it's just bad timing. I think when we enact new code. Uh. We need to really think through what the impacts are. And their ramifications. I'm I'm doing a remodel right now and living through the twenty twenty-one code and some of the impact centers, learning all about it. Uh, so, so anyway, long story short, I feel. We should refund the fees. It's just bad timing around. I think, uh, it's not gonna make them whole. We already had to spend. Uh, the twelve K on on. And the other thing is, I don't think this is really a refund, in my opinion, due to the service, whether it's from. The fire district or from the town, that that's not the issue. It's just. It it seems reasonable and fair to be where, in my opinion.
Justin O. Uh, yeah, I, uh. I know that Victoria said that the fees were having to pay any terms regardless of whether the requirement for the sprinkling system. So the seventy five, seven, it might be reduced because the two twenty-five versus the two ten.
So I did an estimate, building permit fees have gone up. So our permit software, even with the reduced valuation, the permit fee would now be nine thousand. So the overall, it's a little bit higher because we adjusted permit fees. So I would have to have work with Cassie and go back to look at our rates and effect at the time. That this permit was issued to figure out what the reduction could be, that they're actually a little bit higher. And I'm also not the best at this software, so. But I'm gonna assume there was, I believe, we adjusted building permit fees.
Give us a ballpark. I'm sure you think that.
I mean, it'd be a proportional difference between two twenty-five and two ten, right? So. Um, if we adjusted the valuation, and I I was, even though the cost of the system was maybe twelve. There's gonna be some added labor and potentially like that in, you know, in the overall cost of construction or maybe some ancillary costs. So I kind of rounded up the valuation adjustment, so. Proportionally. And I don't know exactly how all our fees and permits were.
And if you're uncomfortable, that's fine. I understand.
Again, proportional difference, but again, because the permit fees have adjusted, um, the software is keeping on a higher.
Um, so. I'm not afraid of refunding these fees because they're. I I also look back on. Setting a precedent that you mentioned. I recall not too long ago in this term. He hasn't been placed for the resident of the best here sport. He was not allowed to put up a uh addition on their home because the pressure. Is not allowed to be. Um. However, with the pressure, using the code, telling them to make this bill, it's just inadequate now for the field reduction. So we have to go by whatever was in effect out of construction. So.
Okay.
I'm also agreeing with uh Derek Putnam and Justin Mo on this. When you apply for permit. Project of the pound. But the code is, and. It's what he, what he has to live with, and it's. Code changes all the time. Changing in many respects. Adjusting things retroactively after we make a code change is just, I believe, very bad precedent. But I do think, if if I wish to, right, the fee may have been paid two hundred and fifty dollars for. The application fee for the conditional use process.
Um, yeah.
I would be in favor of of refunding that, uh, because that was directly tied to some information. Of the town staff at the time. Provided correct information, so there's some automation here. But so with that, with that exception, I'm not in favor of through.
Just the owner. So I. I'm in favor of the conditional use fee refund and the difference in twelve thousand dollars. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And I can work with Kathy to look at going back to our rates, if you'd like, in time, you know, the rates that were in place at time of permit issuance. And we can rerun the numbers, um, to get that proportional difference to if there's a permit.
Is there any opposition to your?
Yeah.
No.
I'm still in favor of the. Because I don't think it has anything to do with the fees. It's just, it's a timing issue. We changed the code, so.
To be clear on the, um, you'd like the proportional or whatever the valuation difference is, we set it to. Two ten instead of two twenty-five, and then fees and taxes. Two ten instead of two twenty five and then fees and taxes. So kind of the entirety or just? Fees.
I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of tax.
I wouldn't be in favor of taxes either, just for this.
Okay. So to be clear, that is the building permit fee and the plan check fee. Um which again, I think are about a third of the overall. So again, now really we're asking to try and dial in just that difference.
Either you feel differently about that taxes of most of permanent. Where we are.
Uh I I'm just uncomfortable with the whole thing. I don't see. But those other fees should be, since they haven't been paid from the first books.
Uh yeah, so chess, there's other things.
Okay.
So I want to be clear. We have a majority. We're talking reimburse the two hundred and fifty. Dollar application fee for the bad direction given by our higher staff. And the valuation difference per proportional to what the rates were then.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
From two twenty five down to two ten.
Uh that's.
Okay.
At at that time.
The rates of the fees that were.
Yes.
You have that direction for us.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I just wanna see if that, if we make sure we, do you have any questions on that? So we are all here in the. Okay.
Uh I wish that we randomly do more, that that is the direction that we're getting the staff on this. So there will be. A very small amount that uh maybe altogether. Pays that inspection fee that you got to do every single year. Uh we appreciate that you're living here. We appreciate that. You are working hard, give opportunities for others to be able to, if you're to be known otherwise. And uh really appreciate the the uh. Uh the spirit that you gave in the workshop today. Um regarding this, I'm sorry uh that we're not able to. So with that, uh we will move on. Uh to um discussion direction on consideration of our size in the water line on G Wall Street during the electric undergrounding project. This staff reports.
Hey, this would normally be Aaron, but I think he's out. Business today, so. Um as you guys. As you know, we are getting ready to do um some electric undergrounding on E Walls. Avenue. And in the mix of that, um they've also uh. Discovered that the orange water line that runs parallel to the electric line. Um is in need of replacement. It's not in any dire situation, but it is on our capital improvement plan to replace it.
Time, there it is.
Oh.
All right.
All right.
I'll let you take a breath. You can crack me. Um and so we had our engineer do an estimate on what it would cost to. Um repair both the water line and underground electric in preparation for pavement up in the coming season. And so he has estimated that it will be approximately. Eighty thousand.
That's just the water.
That's just the water. Okay, the electric's separate. And so we were looking at how could we pay for something like that? It would have to be done at some point on our capital planning, but we usually do try to, if the ground's open, we try to take care of everything we can underground. Um we do have one hundred thousand dollars available for study the Apple Valley Water Line. That we could reallocate to this project and then rebudget the Apple Valley Study. Um if this is of the interest to the board of trustees, that's just one suggestion. If you um. We could brainstorm more or if you have other ideas, but that seemed to be the most obvious from the water fund itself.
And the Apple Valley.
We are not seeing any, we have not had any concerns.
Happens during this budget.
Since that valve, yes.
Yes.
So I I'm having trouble following the math. So while we're in there doing the electric.
Which the neighbors are contributing to.
We're gonna serve this line.
How much folk money do we save by doing the the water?
Don't know how much um.
About twenty.
It would be, actually, I think he had about a hundred and fourteen. And thirty five, potentially by not having another mobilization. And the other one was that will come up on the roads plan. And we don't want to redo the road. Street itself, right, to repave. I don't remember if it's for repaving that or if it's. Or if it's a miller overlay or just write the chip seal. But I thought that's coming up. I don't know if it's next year, year after. Want to get this done before we do that.
So so. My hearing aids are working a little bit.
Okay.
Um so thirty five K folk savings if we, while we're doing open heart surgery, go ahead and fix.
And yes, instead of redoing the road and then ripping it out.
Right, that's ridiculous. Every time I see that happening.
No one likes to do.
Okay, thank you.
Our. What what's the condition of the water? Is is it? I get the point. We're doing that, it's going to replace some of them. So five year line, eight year line, forty year line.
Small. So it was set to be replaced because it's one of the smaller four inch lines, which we don't want anywhere. So it was to do that. And in particular, this is the one we would connect. New fire hydrant at the end of lively and prospect where we have that really old one from eighteen, whatever.
And they're in the high risk area.
To increase the water pressure for people.
Yeah, it increases the flow. You have more volume coming out because we'd be putting in an eight inch pipe instead of a four inch pipe. The pressures around the lines are the same. But the diameter allows more as well as real.
For what, what we've seen up there, I think is. To the residents benefit and to the town. They have a new hybrid up there. It's right on the edge of that open space, so. Although I. I really don't want to give up the Apple Valley Water Line study because that's a, it's very approach to the town. I'd really like to see both of them convinced. I I don't know how close we are to getting the Apple Valley Water Line. Study done. I mean, we're into July. We haven't got five months left of the year.
Right, that's why we don't have it now. And I thought if we could get to it still this year. We could come back and do a budget amendment then, rather than ask about doing a budget amendment now. We could use the hundred thousand we have for this project that's come up. And still come back if we want, if we can get to it. We have the P R V, the wastewater treatment facility, we're coming out of a number of utility projects. If we can still get to trying to get more details on the Apple Valley Water Line this year, then we need that.
And we'll be doing budgeting in two and a half, uh three months at the latest. We could budget it again too. So. It's only putting it off a few months.
Can somebody educate me on the Apple Valley. Study and what the value is?
We now concerned, so. We replaced, right, a big section of that line going from thirty six to panelo. Just three or four years ago. Because of skill, whether recovery were there, then I wasn't. Well, that was the tail end. I came in at the tail end of that project with. But we then had a couple of breaks with the water line. And yet I don't know that it's so much the actual line itself as it is the terrible bedding that they just set. This on Bradstone, which we see in a lot of places.
So we would like to do a study.
I understand what the.
Verify it.
You know, it's gonna cost millions, so.
If if it needs it.
Uh trustee Bren, you have some favor of getting this done. Um as you say, we're gonna be revisiting anyway. I heard about this talk at your restaurant tonight about publicly. For what to meet to increase the budget force on the fire mitigation measures anyway. There's no reason we couldn't do this at the same time. I think. In taking that neighborhood is the highest fire risk in neighborhoods in. In the city that fires are definitely used to be replaced. Could be quickly keeping the fire. Coming down from the hill out down. We should, we need to upgrade our water infrastructure in that area of town. Yeah, but it's on the favor of this. Yeah, this to me seemed like the no brainer. And equal concerns, it's like, oh, well, this is wildfire mitigation as well, really, when it pays down. If we're able to do the Apple Valley later, I'm I'm good with. Using those funds at this point, if we're able to do that during this uh calendar year, come back. And uh look for reality from elsewhere, otherwise it goes into the budget uh for next year. Um that's that. If you have some update of across the street.
So the line just continues to crumble. It's the same type of line. I don't know how much or how many of you were there talking about. The line just up the way at Coco that had to go all the way across the road. So we were just potholing and the amazing part was there's even an old pothole there from when they were doing the fiber project. Oh, this is gonna be an easy one, and that's the problem. I popped in my head and I created a problem. But just water going down, the vacuuming was enough that. Particles or what holding it together. I have the pipe out there. There's already a couple of holes in it. So I I'm really surprised they were folding together as a kid. Contractor tells me that very just in dirt, the mud over time, it was all packed together and it can't hold. But then once you break something open, they cut the pipe, put in copper. Another hole starts here. They run a little bit further, new piece of copper. Then the hole started coming out of the side of the hill by his house. So now we have to get into the bushes and further out into C dot. The one nice thing was this potholing company we're working with, which is doing it to test for that service lines. Oh, that's what I'm talking about. But they have traffic control in place for C dot. They were supposed to be done today, but they won't be back tomorrow and the contractor will be back at seven AM tomorrow. And we're gonna see how far we have to go with that, but.
So there's no cost to the homeowner on this?
I would hope it falls on the actual potholing. But I don't know, again, this was then. Uh uh technical support contract that were on the second round. The first one was just getting all of our service lines. That we knew into the database and submitting that by last October. The next round was going through the hundred unknown ones. And they do a random selection and they got together this contract that they're working through from C D P H E. And they're doing numerous towns. But again, their potholer was the one there, right, potholing when it happened. So I think it'd be very difficult to talk to the homeowner.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
Yeah, I think it's to be determined by legal folks.
Yeah, Brandon, do you want to weigh in on this?
Not right now, not on the public record, but we'll come.
I think we have a very good discussion.
And they're insured.
We'll be talking to the contractor first and foremost.
Alrighty, thank you. Anything else?
Oh, good question. Are there other service signs at the same village or do they just go to those properties like from Park Street or to you?
I'm curious. I did hear from one of the property owners right across the street on Park here. Who said he thinks he probably has the same line, one of the old timers who've been. So that was part of the potholing project is to see, it's more for the lead, but the galvanized pipe is. Also somewhat concerning. So, yes. The other seven were, were all copper, no problem that we did.
Okay, moving on to trustee reports. So I'll begin with trustee Dylan, Mr..
Well. So the Parks and Act met. And they discussed. He bikes. By mitigation. But I. And uh. Going to say that as of tonight, I'm resigning as a trustee. It's been my pleasure for the last almost three and a half years. Working with this great group. Carrying knowledge from trustees, mayor, great staff of the town. And for town, just over two thousand people, they really get a lot of things accomplished. And it's a great town. My wife and I pinch ourselves all the times that living here, how much we love it. Uh I appreciate the involvement of the community. Uh everybody being so involved in town. Uh people volunteering. Um but I've always been quiet. And I think, I really think that uh. I've long ago been, I've brainwashed and started for me to. Keep track of, listen to what everybody was saying. And even when I'm speaking, I kind of lose track of what I'm saying. I don't think I'm doing. Uh not involved and engaged like I should be. Um in five hours meetings, two hours pass out of bedtime is. Pretty hard for me. So and Mayor Rogan says she knows a couple of people who would have appointed, would do a great job. Uh but I plan to stay involved with community. Uh social runs, the Lions Health and Wellness, the Orchard, and I'd like to join a board or commission. To help make lines, lines that will so.
So I I wanted to ask each of us just to respond to that before we go on to our additional reports and. I'm sorry to hear this. It has been an utter pleasure to work with you the last three years. Had a tour before. Your spirit has been something that has been a joy. I love the reports you brought from Parks and Rec particularly. Because your own passion for that area is very obvious and apparent. And. That I was just walking past the the Orchard the other day and looking at the. Growth and everything there is very, very grateful. For the, you know, the you took in that. Yeah, we are a small town and it does pretty much require that that our board members, all of them. Be down the leads a bit. I think I knew that when I first came on the board. I'm semi retired. Uh and I'm a, I'm a lady, lady now, really, like. I I know that's something that's been tough for you. So I I do understand. Uh the difficulty of making that as far as um. Appointments, I I would have defer, we'll wait and talk about that after we are finished the trustee reports and we can get some input from our attorney. Uh but yeah, that's, those are my thoughts. Mark, do you want to say anything?
Very. Just like this, not only sitting next to me. It's, yeah, you're a quiet trustee. A balance is needed on some, I talk too much. It's good to have somebody that's quiet on the board. And I, you know, we share an interest in parks. I used to be the liaison through the Parks Initiative. Um the other things you do, I'm, I'm working with, right? I'm a good running guy, it's wonderful. And I understand it can, it can be. To physically and mentally taxing to do long meetings. Sometimes later night, at my advanced age, I wonder, am I still following this or not? I, all I can say is I appreciate your service. If it wasn't for people like you, Scott, before, and that, you know, you have this, we need a person to thank you for everything you've done, what you're willing to do. You're a perfect example of what this town needs and it's disappointing to see, but I mean. Small towns run on, people like to, people step forward, people volunteer, people who run for office. People stick with it, and they want, it was actually with a cup of tea. So really appreciate it, but I appreciate all the junior and I have been paid for the time. This guy's a big, everybody, the whole, the model, tell. See you.
Much as that, other than I'm I'm shy. Uh so wish you the best. Um I have a family member with long COVID, so I had no idea you were dealing with that and the challenges and so. I've been impressed, you know, you, they will make it this far then. Uh so and 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 yeah, I think it's great, all the other activities you're involved in town. Uh, so, and, 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 yeah, I think it's great, all the other activities you're involved in town and so on. It's, it's a part being here, you're still being great, so thank you for your service and. Rest in peace, family, you're, you're on over.
I do think someone else can bring more to this seat. Let me thank you. We thank you. All right, we'll come back to what, what now is the vacant here on the board after we've finished our, our trustee reports. Mark.
Um, I was. You've, you've heard from the E B C tonight. Uh, you may also have last week that I was very occupied on like a business. I have pictures for this. So I, I have, I have no reports from those commissions, I've already heard of that.
Trustee Del. Uh, yeah, the acknowledging board that last week. Here's what's interesting. We, uh, they are laying their notes. We've got a new chair, vice chair and second chair. We have five new members, we're going to be in between the board as last two members of time long. It, we appreciate the S and G and, and the knowledge that the new people are bringing. But just like we commented, when these boards roll over in two years, there is an heck of a lot of. Talent and institutional knowledge is going out the door, so. Even out of the institution and all of that. The, um, I tend to, I tend to know we have scheduled. September thirteenth, I probably drew to that part, uh. For the email prospect nearly real party fire mitigation. It hasn't been cleared yet, the bowling party parts in all the space. I still need to know whether they're going to be able to do their work in time for that. But ten of them, we, uh, we're gonna schedule different app. What I call the volunteers and. Uh, question for you, you're, you're going to be gone on August four, or on August eighteen? I'll, I'll be on. Yeah, I would, uh. In last year, when I was out with the city child. Sat on the deck in a different place and, and joined the meeting, but we're going to be this year. All the content. Yeah, I don't think any of us are ever going to point match trustee, uh. Groundings that. Like, I think it was one in the morning that they even started.
Oh, yeah, Slovenia.
Yes, Slovenia.
Place to have a meeting. I, I want to add one thing, the fire mitigation, fire. W I, how to task force. E R C. Trustee Lowell and I and staff people are meeting tomorrow and we try to kind of finalize some recommendations.
Are we giving tomorrow? No, it's not final. No, it's not.
Oh, okay, we'll be meeting soon. Try to finalize some recommendations.
Just they never.
Uh, S F C met last week. We spent the majority of the meeting discussing the, uh, comp plan update. So we were going to do the leads and all that. And then we also discussed with Cassidy's departure, all the balls she had in the air, so. Uh, certainly encourage staff to, uh, reset, you know. Get some kind of a resource to help out, because she had, we listed, Kim listed out like ten different projects that were. Anyway, so, so in next meeting, we're going to continue our. We had a conflict with the.
Historic Preservation Commission, um, did not meet in the month of, uh, July. Will meet again in the following days. Uh, with that, Attorney Dittman, I'd like to. Go to you and, uh, hear what our options are in terms of, of replacing. Uh, trustee Delman.
Yeah, so there's, there's kind of two basic options and different permutations of what that looks like. So. Um, once a resi, once there is a vacancy, so today, um, you know, there are sixty days interstate law to fill that vacancy. And you can do it one of two ways. One, you can call for a special election at some point during that, that sixty days. And to fill the remainder of the term. Or, you know, what is more common, I think, is appointment. Um, and that can be done in many different ways. I think the most common way that we've done it in the past is we. Solicit for statements of interest or something of that, of that nature. And then we have, you know, interviews before the board, where these people come before the board and. Um, you know, state why they want to be a trustee and the, the board votes on who, um, is, it fills that vacancy. Um, people have done it other ways, where they pointed committee and the committee appoints or other things, but. Um, you know, in lines at least, the way we've done it is the statement of, um, you know, interest and interview methodology.
Okay, um, did I, I'm sorry, maybe I missed something. The. The ones replacement will be an appointment or a party this week?
That's what we're determining a special election.
Yeah, the, the appointment is typically by the board. It's not by an individual.
We're by this one. Or this, this, this board decides to do an election or to avoid. And that's the first thing we probably need to look at. Only here from staff on this.
Um, well, first of all, Glenn, thank you so much for your service. It, it has been a pleasure getting to know you better and why your contributions hurt me. Um. Of course, with it being almost August and. How many days do you need for a special election?
Gosh, at least ninety.
How does that work with the sixty day requirement and if it's ninety to do a special?
No, you have to have it scheduled.
Yeah, you schedule it. You, you have that decision to go to a special election. It isn't.
And knowing that the packets for the next term will be out in January, we would love it. I think if. This board is comfortable making an appointment. Um, I, we have been through this before, um, with a, with previous boards, um. And as Brandon said, it's sim, we, we use, we had a separate form. Or application kind of similar to what we use for boards and commissions, just so people get to know why they're interested. How long have they lived here? What do they think these, what are the priorities pending? Um, we could certainly, you know, put together a statement of interest. Form, if that is the direction you want to go and get it out to all sorts of media. You know, but in different forms throughout our community and. Um, schedule either a special meeting or we can use an upcoming workshop time to do some interviews. I think it depends on how many applicants you get. You know, that can make a difference to lunchtime, that's it.
Is it possible to move quickly enough that we did that on August fourth? Uh, well, let me, let me, let me go back just for a minute. Uh. It seems to me to do an election, we're talking that person. Being maybe ninety days before. So I don't think anybody, yeah. No, no, okay, yeah, well, so.
We have to have a formal vote on that, Brandon. I mean, and can this group do it with five here or do you want to wait for the other two?
Um. So I think we can, we can do that with just the four, that's what I called it.
He's still seated to the line.
He actually.
Okay.
At that moment.
Well, it only takes four. If you guys are coming.
So we, we need some scheduling.
I mean, how, I would like to move more quickly as opposed to more slowly.
We've got, they've got thirty days. Uh, if we don't affect someone in thirty days, then we'll, or, or declare an election, end an election, how it actually happens. So we've got thirty days.
We have a code conflict with state reg, state. Today I pulled out the state reg state and I sent it to Brandon. Our code. Um, says thirty days and it cites the Colorado revise statutes, the Colorado revise statutes also actually cite sixty days. Could just, sorry, so it's so hard to cite statute because then if they change, we haven't updated our code. So. For state statute, we have sixty days to get someone, not to remove, but yeah.
Um.
We've got several code cleanings, here's another.
That could be a full time job.
In the election makes no sense. So let's follow, let's go forward with. Doing the, uh, statement of interest and, I mean, is there. I, you can vote on that tonight, right?
Um, we, we, we do need to vote on this, Brandon, a motion, a second and, uh.
Or do we need a resolution?
Oh, you're, you're.
Sorry, I clicked, clicked it twice. So I think direction is fine. If you feel more comfortable doing a motion of vote, that's, you can do that as well, but, um, it's whatever you prefer.
I think we're comfortable with, uh, with direction to staff on that. Um.
Yeah, about fourth or something.
Been grateful that we don't have.
Yeah, something else I can add.
Yeah.
By the time you had an election, it'd be, he'd be past election season, which is one of the things that, I mean, I'd like to trust you, we need to be in this thinking, I mean, that's, that's not. Well, they have pretty much people.
How, how quickly can you get something out? Um, so if you want us to, if you could do that tomorrow, I think that would.
Unless you want to develop what questions.
We did that before.
We, we have a server song. Yeah.
Placement.
We have examples.
Cause I, I think next meeting's workshop.
If we could do it, we could, if we could jump and do the interviews at the next meeting's workshop.
How much time do you want to leave statement of interest out there?
Um, well, if we get it out tomorrow, um.
It would be an e-blast tomorrow, wouldn't have time to go on the newspaper. It'd be the e-blasts. Our website. Um, we can post things, of course.
So let's, let's talk about the value of, uh, getting on it on the fourth as opposed to the eighteenth. Not that we could, you know, that's funny, you're not gonna be there before.
And you know the mayor status.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, it could be for mayors who also lose here, you know, good point.
Or a special meeting, what date do you return?
I think probably the eighteenth is soon enough. Uh. Would, would we be able to seat that person on the eighteenth?
Brandon?
Yeah, so they would fill the vacancy on that, on that day. And so we have done it at the beginning of the meeting. We've done it at the end of the meeting. It's really up to you about when you'd want to seat them.
We could do it at the beginning of the meeting then. So you could do the workshop, make the selection and seat them at the beginning of the meeting on the eighteenth.
Yeah, so it would be the first item on the agenda would be to, you know, have the decision. And then they'd be seated at that point. It's pretty similar to the election, how we, when we do the passover and very similar, one board steps down, the next one comes in, it'd be like that.
So trustee Lowell will be back on the seventh, so we could. Do it during the day instead of at night if you want that. Or evening and have a special, the following week.
I'd be a man of attention special.
Yeah, I think that would be better if, if we were able to do that year, year around. I'm set, I'm set, I'll be on the, on the seventh, um. Very optimistic. Um, well, I think, you know, I mean, we, we also have. There are people I will contact. I'm twisting this thing. You know, there were people that I, I, you know, I, I twisted arms to get folks to consider running this thing around, but. There, there were other, there were other arms I twisted at that point in time that I would be inclined to twist again. There's nothing inappropriate.
Is there any other day of, uh, the August seventh, seventh is a Thursday. Is there a day the week of the eleventh or is everyone available?
I'm on the tablet, eleven through.
Uh-oh.
Seventeen.
Okay, so then that's where they're again, unless we would do the eighth.
Um.
No, the ninth is a Saturday.
I'm supposed to be going on the eighth. I could wait and leave the ninth, uh, or whatever.
So.
It's like a change up.
Trustee Hammer, you said the eleventh? I mean, the.
Yeah.
Seventeenth or eighteenth?
Now let's try for the eighth on that.
Say special meeting.
And we can leave them open until. Um.
The eighteenth. That gives them a week to get their arms around.
Well, I think we could leave, we can, if we're not doing that meeting until the eighth. Uh, we can leave it open until the, uh.
The whole day.
To the end of the month. We put it out today and leave it open to the thirty first. Or go ahead and leave it open.
They're trying to fill it by the eighteen.
There may be people, we need people time to think about it. We need people on vacation. I just. I think probably there is people that, but.
Wish it to the sixth.
So. Advertise it tomorrow.
Advertise it tomorrow.
July twenty second.
Let them know that we will be taking applications through the six. Through August sixth.
We'll do on the sixth at four PM or something.
And can we set the time now for a meeting on the meeting?
Sure, helps us.
Is it possible to do it during the day? I mean. I, I need to go on Friday evening. That's not a big thing. Right. We do it afternoon. Um, one o'clock on that Friday? Three o'clock? Eight AM.
I'm whenever it's convenient.
Well, about ten AM on that Friday. I'm looking at, I, I, it would be better for me if I could get out of town and forget. I speak Sunday. I always get to fly off Saturday, but it's maybe Saturday. So, yeah, let's say ten AM Friday morning, the, the eighth. For that meeting.
Express.
Okay.
Is it, is it the, so these people will, will we interview these?
Yes.
Yes. And hopefully we'll have many. Do you want to? I'll send you.
Six or one, yeah. It's a three or three, right? Oh, boy.
That's happened before and we did a coin flip.
Six coin flips.
We did?
Six.
It was Caleb.
Six.
And we, I'm sorry, what time did we land on?
Oh, no, we had one coin flip. We had six bucks different time and one.
Ten AM.
Oh, okay. Six bucks different time and maybe three to three in the long. Yeah.
Cause that's true.
So would you?
Maybe, right, those.
Yes, so then on August sixth, when it closes, we would send them all to you like a packet. Cause they have to be publicly linked to, we would read out any personal information. So you would have the weekend to look at them. Now they, or you have, you have two days to look at them.
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah, that works for us. It's you guys.
And where do you get us the? Cause you give us the template you used previously for questions?
Sure, sure, sure. A question simply. We have the template for the boards and commissions application and then perhaps a letter of, of interest. You say questions that they should. Yeah. Um. Okay, and then. Choose them that same day so, so they can be sworn in on the eighteen.
Correct.
Okay. And they're gonna have a fast learning for, for.
Okay, um, that's it. We're covered with all that, Brandon. We don't need to do anything else related to it?
No, I think we're good with that.
Okay, um, motion to adjourn, action. Uh, oh, yes, thank you.
Oh, actually.
Without a screw up. No, I didn't. Actually, madam, please.
Um, from the workshop, we have a potential reduction in the clawback budget, stats to look at. Um, number two, follow up with C max on trucks doing the U turns toward Boulder. That was directed through Sergeant Christ. Item three, highway thirty six and highway thirty seven directional signs further back than from the. Three hundred block of main to avoid backups. I think Victoria's gonna be jumping. Number four, potential to partner with Waro to main on a public bathroom. Um, number five, sign code amendments. Um, Anna Ritchie is to get that on the schedule. Um, number six, E B C is to provide a position statement on the moratorium for the next meeting. Uh, number seven, uh, the review, um, on the issuance of the Halstein fees, the board decided. On the two hundred and fifty dollar application fee. And the valuation different on permit fees only, none of the taxes or even those. Um, item A, staff is to review Cassidy's projects for the assignment. And then the last item was move forward with advertising the open seat and soliciting applications. With a special meeting set for, um, August eighth at ten AM. Applications are to be posted tomorrow. Uh, July twenty second, being accepted through August sixth at twelve PM and then we will, um, get a template of questions. To the board. And appoint the same day.
Victoria, that's the same as mine, my computer done stuff.
Okay. Brandon?
Yeah, I don't think additional.
Okay. Now, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Okay. Oh, no, Karen's right. When you worded it, I mean, you're very specific, they voted right, right?
So.
And the motion passes, you know. I don't know, four zero.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, trustee Delman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.